All right, thank you. To order, please. Can we start with the roll call?
Penny Casimir.
Here.
Sandra Bradford. Angela Wilcox.
Here.
Mike Shackleton. Gavin Newman.
Here.
Barry Altshuler.
Here.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Here.
Before we say the pledge, I've been asked by -- we have two board members that are not here tonight. Sandra is not here and she asked me to read something. Dr. Harris, board members and community, I was frustrated to learn this morning that I am not permitted to dial into the board meeting this evening. I am not able to be in person as I am in the process of moving my son to Utah. Due to COVID-related travel restrictions and work requirements, I am in Utah this evening. However, even if I had been able to drive back to Barrington in time for the meeting, I would remain under quarantine and unable to attend in person. I have read through the materials and community feedback. I will listen online. Thank you for your understanding and patience. Thank you, Sandra. Mike Shackleton also asked me to mention that he is not here because he had a longstanding family commitment this evening. And I just want to clarify one thing. The Open Meetings Act requires, in order for someone to vote at a meeting where the board is physically present, the only way you can vote and not be present is if you're traveling on business or ill, or there's some type of family crisis. And so while we have a meeting remotely, which has provided some flexibility with attendance, if we meet in person, it creates challenges for those that are trying to do other things. And so unfortunately, that's where Mike and Sandra found themselves. So that's why they are not here this evening and they will not be available via phone, although their desire was to participate via phone. So on that note, will you stand and join us in the pledge? Dr. Harris, will you lead?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to our August 11th board meeting. We'll start with my report. So I wanted to let the board know and thank everyone for their quick response to dates for our board retreat. Since our board retreat that we were -- had originally scheduled in August, the date became a challenge. We sent out two dates and the date that all seven of us were available is Thursday, September 24th. As a reminder, 7:30 a.m. until 1:30 p.m. But as we get closer to the date, I will fine tune exactly what time we're going to start with our IAS.
It's hard to hear you, Penny. Sorry.
No, I'm glad you said.
It's hard. Can you guys hear? No, okay.
May I ask? Okay. September 24th, 7:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. I will, as we get closer and we work and we work with the IAS B rep, we can fine tune the times, but you know, please save that amount of time. Okay? The other thing that I had on my report is I sent the board a copy of the Naperville 203 equity resolution. At our, at our meeting in July, the board had agreed that we would like to look at a resolution for, to approve on our own. And so the Naperville resolution was one of the ones that I thought was most comprehensive. And so I'm hoping you all had time to take a look at that. Is that the type of framework we would like to have? Because if it is, obviously it's very specific to Naperville right now. We could, Brian and I could sit down and try to craft a similar agreement that would be specific to Barrington 220. It's okay with everybody?
It would be great.
Okay.
I think it's great.
I liked it.
A good starting point.
Okay.
So I think it would be important to put that on as a discussion item at the next meeting then, so that then everybody could take a look at it and weigh in.
And then it wouldn't be approved until the, the second meeting in September at the earliest. And we could probably get some.
Kind of adjust it then for the discussion item, like you know, change some of the wording? Or you don't even want to start on that?
Well, Brian and I will go back and try and come up with a draft.
That's what I'm wondering.
And then bring it to the board at our next meeting on September 1st. And then board members can edit at will.
Good, perfect.
Okay. That is all I had for my report. Does anyone have the public comment sign up? Jim? Is that your little sucker?
Do you have the sign up?
Thank you. Okay, we have now come to the portion of our meeting when we have set aside time for public comment. We value your thoughts and opinions and ask that you state your name, elementary attendance area, or relationship to the district before beginning your comments. We also ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Janine has a timer and a little bell. While this is not a conversation, if any comments require further attention, we will ask Dr. Harris to follow up and report back to the board. Right now, I only have one person signed up to speak, but I did want to just suggest that in order to allow as many people as possible to speak, if someone has spoken and represented your views, please don't feel the need to repeat your comments. You could stand to show your support, however, we would never, you know, keep someone from commenting, so. The person signed up is Alison Murray. Yep, please come to the table. Please come to the table and I'd probably ask you to pull the microphone closer to you. Uh, your assistant is coming. Thanks.
Who want to speak? I have nothing prepared but realized after sending as many emails and Facebook posts and coordinating as much as I can, that I'm really obligated to walk that walk and come here today and give you my thoughts. So I have three children. My name is Sarah Alison Murray. I have two in high school and one who is a rising eighth grader at station. And I have, as does my husband, a medical background. And I know everyone has looked at all of the data and I won't bore you with 0.0008% hospitalization in children. I know you know all these things, but what I would say is that we had a plan that was put forth with board approval that was supported by 70% of parents who wanted to return to school for their children. We had a plan that supported the choice for 30% of parents not to have their children return in person to school. That gave us 100% of families who were supported by our initial plan to return, if desired, to school. That was replaced by a plan that gives 0% of families' choice in what they would like for their students for school. I know that you may not see a lot of people here and I know that you may not have received a preponderance of emails expressing displeasure, but I would say that that is because most families don't feel they need to do this, because you already know how they feel, because the survey was answered, and that should be sufficient. They should not have to say twice what they want for their children and for their families. So I ask you to reject this plan, to support the families you represent in favor of the plan that gave 100% of families' choice for what they wanted for their, their children. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll declare public comment closed. Dr. Harris, your report.
Okay, let me get hooked up here. Hey, working. Okay, this evening I have several things in my superintendent's report I wanted to update the board and the community on. The first thing I wanted to comment on before I get into the specific items was at our last board meeting last Tuesday night, right here in this room, we were streaming the board meeting live like we always do on our YouTube channel. And unfortunately, there was about a half hour into it, something like that, there was quite a few inappropriate comments made by some individuals. And they were false accusations against several students at Barrington High School. You know, obviously, we just wanted to state that, obviously, these were completely inappropriate, unacceptable. As soon as our staff recognized and realized what was going on, they did cut the feed. And we are in the process currently of following up with the Barrington police as well as staff at Barrington High School, investigating the situations. Several of the accounts were alias accounts and we will, you know, figure it out. It's going to take a little time through IP addresses and so on and so forth, but clearly, those types of derogatory comments and inappropriate statements are unacceptable and we will get to the bottom of it. I just wanted to make sure the board and the community knew that, so. And obviously, we're being extremely cautious with any of those type of services that we have moving forward to make sure we don't have similar circumstances in the future. I would like to take the opportunity to introduce our new director that's being recommended tonight on our personnel report, and that is Nathaniel Ross. Nate, it goes by Nate, right? Welcome. Thank you for being here this evening. I want to talk a little bit about you, Nate. He's been recommended as our new Director of Equity Race and Cultural Diversity of Initiatives. Again, for the community and the board as a reminder, this is a position that is a new position in our district. We actually reallocated some administrative staff through attrition and we're able to create this much-needed position in, in working in our district for years to come. So a little bit about Nate. He has, he's working, currently working on his PhD at the University of Illinois Chicago, has a master's from Northeastern and a bachelor's from North Illinois University. Spent a huge amount of time as a teacher, a high school English teacher, as well as a high school principal in a suburban district, and most recently as a dean of students at a local high school as well. So we are excited to have Nate. Nate, I'm going to give you an opportunity a little bit later on in the meeting when the board actually votes on the personnel report and give you an opportunity to, to say hi. So congratulations and we're excited about having you join our team. I also wanted to take just a minute and update the board on a email that I got this week, I'm trying to find the information here, about our Early Childhood Center. This, this school has the most rigorous evaluation process than any school in the district. The early childhood program in the state of Illinois constantly evaluates the services and the instruction that's going on in every early childhood center across the state. And our school, for the second time, has earned the Gold Status Award. They were very excited. They're going to be celebrating that when we get back to school next week. Looking forward to seeing the staff and congratulating them. This, this award is directly related to the highest quality standards in the learning environment, the teaching quality that's actually going on, all program administrative standards, in other words, the expectations within the facility, professional development for staff being ongoing and relevant, also staff-child ratios that are at or within state guidelines, and finally, staffing qualifications. One unique thing about our early childhood program right now is we have a significant amount of our staff that are bilingual and that's a huge piece in that building. That was something that was noted in the actual results. It talked about, you know, an amazing effort to have that be a part of the facility there and the staff. So we are very excited about our early childhood center staff and, and the programming and the education we provide for our students at that level. And again, they have people come in every year and sit in their classrooms and evaluate. None of our other schools have anything like that. So it's a big deal and I know they work very hard there. So if you know any of the ELC staff members, make sure you tell them congratulations and we're excited about that. So congratulations to them. That was a wonderful email I got about a week ago, so it was good news. I do want to take the balance of my time tonight to talk about back to school. Obviously, we are scheduled to begin the school year next Thursday afternoon, August 20th. And as I have stated repeatedly, the beginning of the school year is so different than any other year. And I've been doing this for 34 years in public education as a teacher, assistant principal, principal, assistant superintendent, and the last 11 years as superintendent. And every year, the first day of school is an exciting day. It never changes. This one's going to be a little different. There's absolutely no doubt about it. It's going to be different, but yet I believe still very exciting. Still get, there's going to be a little anxiety from, for me personally as well about what actually is happening. I think I've shared that publicly and, and with the board. So therefore, it, it's, it will be, you know, a very important time, an exciting time. So I'd like to walk through just a few of the details that I typically do at this meeting about as we begin the school year. Then I also want to add a little more additional information, obviously, given the circumstances that we're currently in. With the beginning of the year, we always have new teacher orientation. This past week, we welcomed 30 new teachers to our district. It, well, even though it was virtual, it was primarily on Zoom. I know our principals had those teachers into the facility later in the week, but I had the opportunity to meet them all through a Zoom time and they are again, once again, excited and, you know, just looking forward to the opportunity to working with our kids in this community and being a member of the staff in, in 220. Also, I just want to comment that our enrollment is, is exactly where we thought it was going to be, flat. We've staffed it exact, you know, perfectly. The elementary class sizes are, are right where they should be. We have a couple of little hotspots, but again, remember the board, we eliminated the contingency staff and this time of year is usually when I say, okay, I need to use one or two of these. But we are in really good shape right now and it appears that we're, you know, we're staffed well and, and in a good position, especially at the elementary level. Middle school and high school also, you know, is, is in good shape. All of these schedules and the teacher assignments were released last Friday. So those are currently all out to the students. So we are prepared to begin the school year next, next Thursday. I, I do want to share some updates, obviously, given the circumstances as well as, you know, the unusual start that we're going to have this school year. Since the meeting last week, when we, I shared the update on how we're going to begin the school year, obviously, then we began to work with staff and trying to figure out what our staff situations were going to be. As of this morning, we had 260 staff members request and are pursuing some HR accommodations. And that's 218 of our, about 760 teachers, 260 staff total. The rest were support staff. About 30% of our teachers in the current recommended start of the school year are still asking for some type of accommodations, even without the students primarily present in the building. So it's still pretty significant. And so our HR staff has been working daily and around the clock, you know, working on each one of those situations. They're all different. Everybody's unique. Some combination of different types of, like I said, accommodations for staff members based on medical issues and medical needs and, and so on and so forth. So they're all still in progress, but we do believe we're going to be able to navigate those and be prepared to start the school year next week. Also, we are prepared to launch a parent university that I shared with the board last Thursday in my weekly update. One of the major concerns about the distance learning has been that, you know, parents struggle with understanding what's expected. And clearly, with the situation we had last spring, a lot of unknowns became very relevant and became very visible in our classrooms and in the situation that occurred. So we are planning a variety of parent universities that will be available multiple times on multiple topics at different levels, starting next week. And we will run those for several weeks as the school year kicks off about how they can help support their students and what they can expect from our teachers this school year in a distance learning mode. I also know that there's been quite a bit of conversation and feedback around the social emotional needs of kids and the mental health aspect with students. As, as you know, I have repeatedly talked about and worked to address this issue for years. It's been a board goal and a board priority for several years. And it will be this year. It's no different. Certainly, our challenges are going to be unique. They're going to be different. And our staff is, is engaged in making significant plans on how we can help support students that we know may be struggling. There's going to be multiple paths to be able to do that. Staff will be doing daily probes in some of their instructional scenarios and, and we will be taking daily attendance, so it's going to be significantly different, although there'll be an accountability piece on a regular basis, as it would be in a normal school year. Again, significantly different than what occurred in the springtime. We also have established several community partnerships. Barrington Youth and Family Services has reached out and, and Beth, our assistant superintendent, has been working directly with them. And we are going to ramp up and engage in some additional services that we provide for families as well as students, you know, that may be struggling during this unique time and be prepared to do that throughout the school year, regardless of what mode we're in. We also, NAMI is another local organization that's provided support, mental health support, and have reached out and we're, we're coordinating with staff as well to connect our parents, families, and kids to those community supports. So that's outside of the school district. Obviously, our mental health staff inside the district will be engaged as well. So that's going to be an evolving issue and topic that we're going to have to work diligently on from the very beginning. Again, regardless of what the mode is, no matter what we're doing, the instruction, the classrooms, the, whether it's virtual or in person at any point this year, it's going to be different, as I stated last time. It's going to be significantly different. One other committee that we got put together over the past week is a task force, I'll call it a task force or a committee, going to work on reentry metrics. In other words, we're going to start to look at what it's going to take. I mentioned last week, there was a variety of themes and topics that we're going to be looking at to create those metrics. The problem is, until the guidance is stable and established from our public health departments, it's very hard for any school district, and no school district, to my knowledge, has them at this point, to establish those metrics. I can tell you that all superintendents with their staffs are talking about this daily, trying to determine what would be the, you know, key path forward to be able to bring back large groups of students into our schools. This committee will consist of school nurses, as well as some of our teachers, support staff, as well as our principals on that committee. So they're going to pedal fast here over the next couple of weeks. I hope to have something for the board to share at our next meeting on September 1st to be able to put together a, a plan to look at what those reentry metrics would look like and what would be some of the criteria. Again, we can establish, for example, what the, one might be a positivity rate in our area, right? But until a public health department states specifically what that positivity rate is, then it's very hard. That's not something for educators to decide. That's for public health officials to determine what would be appropriate. So we will continue to work with them and hopefully get some further guidance in that area. Finally, the IHSA and the IESA, which is the Middle School Athletic Association, continues to provide further guidance. The good news is, all of our sports that are allowed to start, that have been approved by the Illinois Department of Public Health through those organizations, started yesterday. Here at the middle school level, it's cross-country and softball. And at the high school level, it's cross-country, swimming, let's see, tennis and golf, boys and girls. So we have a lot of activity going on at both the middle schools and at the high school now. And we, again, we will continue to engage in those activities. I mean, our staff at those buildings have done a great job putting in those self-certification requirements and checking kids in when they come on the campuses and we will continue to do that. And everybody is really working collaboratively and well together. I, I can tell you that you've heard of other districts and schools that have had challenges with this. Our staff has done an outstanding job and it's working. And our kids have stayed healthy and we've not had any major issues up to this point. So we'll certainly continue those activities as long as we can as following the guided protocols and expectations. So we are excited about that. Let's see. Finally, I just, you know, want to remind the board that, as I said, you know, the recommended plan at this point is to start this, or start the school year in a distance learning mode. The bottom line on this decision, I, I said it last week, I'll say it again. I don't like it either. I, but, but on the other hand, it is the only option at this point, based on the information we have and the circumstances. The uncertainty is significant. The risk is high when we put unknowns, putting large groups of people together. In fact, I was made aware of today, we have a large group of elementary students in one part of our community, one of our elementary schools, that about 20 students that have been tested positive. They have an outbreak going on in one of our elementary schools. That's just an example, something I learned about today. It's pretty significant. And, you know, unfortunately, that's the risk that we all run when we put large groups of students into a school without appropriate social distancing, without the contact tracing scenario that's been vetted out and appropriate, and have the self-certification and health protocols in place that warrant the situation to play out. So, you know, those, those items are key and I guarantee, those will be included metrics in the reopening. We have to have guarantees that we know that all of those procedures and processes are in place and we have clear public health guidelines about what the expectation is. I think the board has seen that every school district around us is in the same situation. There is not any district, to my knowledge, that's starting on day one. All of them have different, kind of different scenarios, but we're all looking really similar if you dig into their plans. And the reality is, we all know, we all are looking at the same situation. And it, it is high risk and unsettling and uncertain. But what I can assure you is, as soon as possible, we will have our students get back into our buildings. We actually are currently planning on that situation at all of our sites. In fact, we have a principal meeting tomorrow morning, start to talk about specifics at each campus. The high school staff, for example, has already started freshman orientation scenarios and they've started to put out that information to bring, again, small groups of students in a very organized fashion onto the campus next week, give a tour of the building, they're there for 30 minutes, and they go home. That type of a scenario, as an example. We're going to seek those opportunities. We are going to be bringing in students on day one in some of the programs that we identified, special education, our high need students, high-risk students that we know need that critical support, that quite frankly, were completely unsuccessful in the springtime. And we will seek, continue to seek opportunities to expand that as we move forward. You know, I had indicated that we would reengage in this conversation in mid-October. Again, that was the end of the first academic quarter, but it's going to be ongoing. It's not going to end. And we're going to continue to look for opportunities to bring our students back on campus. But that's all I have at this point, unless there's any questions about opening up school next week. Or any other topic.
I just have two quick questions. One was, when you were talking about class sizes, does, how are you, are you, are you looking at class sizes as, you know, in the scenario when, you know, all kids are back? Or are you guys kind of looking at it with the, you know, kids who want to do e-learning versus, I just don't know how you're deciding, you know.
It's assuming everybody, it's like a, a complete roster for that teacher.
Okay.
So 22 to 28 students.
Okay, got it.
So they've been assigned in infant campus, you know, like elementary, it's the class list, right? And at the secondary level, it's, you know, the target number's around 25 per section at the secondary level.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. All right, and then my second question, I just didn't understand something you said. You mentioned that even with the current, with no kids in school, that, did you say 30% of the staff is, is asking for accommodations?
That's correct.
What is that, does that mean, like, to, to not work in the school bill? I guess I just don't understand.
Yes, it's a combination of that. It's, some of it has to do with FMLA requests that we are working through and navigating. Most of those are related to childcare. Not all of them, but some, a lot of them. So it's a range of requests, you know, related. Let's see, Teresa, what, what percentage is medical issues? Where's Teresa? There she is. Do you have the percentage that's actually medical? I don't want to give a wrong number. I think I know what it is, but I don't have that in front of me. Yeah, for themselves, correct? Yeah, that's what I thought. So about 50% are individual medical issues for the employee themselves. Another 30% is somebody in their household, family member that they live with, you know, have concerns and have asked for accommodations to work at home, or it depends on the person. The accommodation request is different depending on the person. Some of them will be at home. Some of them will be at home. Some of them will be in the building. And then the others are more family-related. Some of them are childcare issues, some of them are elderly care issues, things like that. It, it varies.
So just so I, can I ask, just a follow-up question? So if we're having community members have to quit their jobs because they have to help manage the learning process, we're allowing our staff to stay home to manage their families. Is that, am I hearing that accurately?
You know, it's our intent as the employer to try and have the teacher in front of the kids. And we're going to work hard to make accommodation, and we're not going to give every single request. We're working through those. We have to follow the law, and we have to follow the expectations. However, we also want to make sure that we, we have the best possible person instructing our kids on a daily basis. But we will follow the law. We're not, we're going to, we have to follow FMLA. We have to follow, you know, accommodation requests per labor law in the state of Illinois. We do that all the time. This is no different, just under these circumstances. So now, our HR staff has not had this amount of requests all at one time in the past. But we have had, we will follow, and we won't approve them all. We'll only approve the ones that have the medical documents and requirements, and that have the appropriate paperwork and so on to support the request. It's not I think and I feels. It's about following the appropriate process through the Human Resources Office.
So Brian, of that 30%, how many, of that 30%, how many do you anticipate will not be teaching in the fall? I mean, you know, some just want an accommodation, but they want to continue teaching. Of that 30%, how many will not be teaching in 220 as of August 20th, if, if, if they get their request processed?
We don't know quite yet, quite frankly. We're working through those. I mean, it's in progress. This takes time. When we have 260 requests as of this morning. So it, you know, they have to follow their proper, again, there's a process you have to go through. And as, as any employer does, and we're doing exactly the same thing. We only have had a few, less than 10, that have actually either resigned or requested a year leave of absence. So those are very minimal, and we were currently actively seeking to fill those positions. We may have to reassign another individual. Gavin, we were talking about that in finance today, like with the kindergarten enrichment program, where we might have to reassign a few of those teachers into these positions if somebody does choose to resign or take a year leave of absence or whatever the case may be. So we are working through that. It's in progress as I speak. But we feel confident by next, you know, week, we'll be in position and have things resolved prior to school starting.
Do you feel confident that all the positions that we need will be filled?
Yeah, every year, we always have a few. I mean, we always have a few last-minute scenario. And, you know, we do, we also are working through and verifying our substitutes availability. Sometimes we start the year with subs in place, and we have already verified that. And actually, we've had a pretty good return rate on that. Our subs are in a real good spot, and we, we weren't sure. And we, we reached out to all of them to confirm that they would be ready to support us as they have in years past. And our subs are, by and large, are committed to continue to work for us. So again, anybody who's subs, they'll be, they'll come into the building like all the other staff members are expected to and, and teach from the classroom that they're serving for.
Any other questions for Brian? Okay. Informational reports. There was one, there was a FOIA request. Any questions about the FOIA report? Okay, committee reports. Policy has a couple of new policies. Stay tuned, everyone. I know that's why you're here.
Finance, that before closed session, long day here at the middle school. We're going to have a tentative budget discussion later, so I won't dive into that. And then we'll be talking about student fees and our food service contract at the high school at our next meeting as a discussion item.
Just to be clear, facilities did not meet. We'll be meeting the second week of September. Will be our next meeting.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
No.
Second. Okay. Included in tonight's consent agenda, under the finance tab, are a bill list from August 2020, an exception report from July 2020, as well as an NSLP exception report from July 2020, a K-8 activity report, a BHS activity report from July 2020, treasurer's report from July, a board payroll wage report fiscal year '21, and a revenues and expenditure report from July as well. There are minutes, both open and closed from July 14. And I'm going to request that we remove the July 23 open meeting minutes. As when I reviewed them, I noticed that, under the adjournment, when we took the roll call, it approved, it appeared that a bunch of us were not present when we were actually there. So I'm going to work with Janine to revise those minutes. So approving, we would be July 14 open and closed. We have a revised personnel report, as well as a consideration to approve a lease refresh for the BHS TV MAC lab. Brian, did you want to say anything about that?
About which one? I'm sorry.
The MAC lab.
Yeah, the, the MAC lab refresh is funds that we have from the federal grant, the Perkins Grant, that are related directly to careers. And certainly, it's time, and, and we'll be using funds for that to update those machines in that environment for the BHS TV program. So if there's any questions about that, we have, those funds are earmarked specifically for that type of a project.
Are there any questions? Okay, also being approved is a paper bid. Did you want to, were there any questions on the paper bid?
The only question I had is I have to assume our paper purchases is going to be way down. So why are we approving such a high-level authority, if you will, for this contract?
Yeah, I would agree. I was, I was surprised when I saw that.
The quick answer is, and I'll let Dave jump in if I don't say it accurately or correct, this is the price per case that we would actually buy, and we will only buy the paper that we need. And if we do have extra at the end of any year, we save it and store it in a storage room at the high school. So, right, Dave, is there anything else with that?
But this is roughly the same amount that we, we talked about last year. And we're talking hypothetically about doing an all-remote environment learning. Why would we need to earmark $70,000 for paper?
I'll let Dave comment on it.
At the time that we were leasing the bid, we were using estimated quantity usage. It's the way the bid went out. At this point, we are anticipating that we will use somewhat less paper. We are going to have both students and staff to varying degrees in our buildings. There also may be other, there are support services that use paper as well for those activities. So in this case, we do have the ability under the bid to be able to alter the quantity. So as we, if we find that we have more paper than we need, we will then adjust the quantity on the delivery so we don't receive the paper and don't pay for it.
The other thing we have as part of our consent agenda is an agreement with the Salem United Methodist Church to use their parking lot for staff parking for Huff Street School. This is the same document we've approved many years, price is the same. Did anyone have any questions about it?
Yeah, in the past, we actually had a map of which. In the past, we actually had a map of which spots were ours. I'm just assuming it's the same as last year. Because in the appendix A, they didn't include the map, so to speak.
Dave Beins nodding his head.
Same. It doesn't change. Okay.
Okay, are there any questions about anything on the consent agenda that hasn't already been answered?
The question I have, I know we've talked about in the past, is are we able to get a multi-year agreement with Salem? Because if we didn't have those spots available, we would have to pivot pretty quickly.
I think we've asked before. Okay, so is there a motion to approve the amended consent agenda with removal of the minutes from the 23rd? Moved. Hold on a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Evan Newman?
Yes.
Penny Casimir?
Yes.
Leah Colister Lazari?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Our next action item is, or is there a motion to approve the COVID-19 reopening plan approval resolution? So moved.
Second.
Okay. To start this out, I just want to read something that we received from our attorney, because our attorney is the one who created this, and is advising us to approve it. So, "School boards are not required to approve the reopening plans. They're required by statute to be approved by the superintendent. However, we are strongly recommended through this, through our resolution, that boards approve them for the following reasons. The resolution strengthens the authority of school boards and administrators to implement and enforce their plans, including safety and protective requirements. Two, to support the TORT immunity defenses, helping to utilize the extensive protection from the COVID-19 liability already provided by the Illinois TORT Immunity Act. Three, the resolution also eliminates, in most cases, the immediate need to identify and amend existing policies which conflict with the reopening plans and COVID-related provisions. And four, approving this is more than just approving remote learning." So, discussion or questions?
I, I guess I'll start. You know, since we've been having these dialogues for a long time, I, I, my mom's a teacher, my sister's a teacher, so I understand where our staff is coming from, and they all care and love about, they love the kids. My challenge is I view education as probably one of the most essential businesses we have in this entire country. And we have community members that are essential workers, if it's in the public or private sector. And businesses, public and private, have figured it out. And from the get-go, I know we tried. Other districts, I think, have done a better job of maybe looking at a hybrid model, some sort of other option outside of going all remotes. I'm terrified, from an SEL component perspective, for these children not being in the classroom, not being around their friends. So I, I just, I know it's a tough decision. But it's, I, I, again, I view education as essential. And when I look at the rules, if you will, and how other people have engaged, if it's even the private or public sector, other businesses have figured it out, and I think we, we really struggled on this one.
Others? Other board members comment? Well, oh, go ahead, Barry. Do you want me to go? Could you just pull the microphone a little closer, too? Thank you.
I prepared a statement. Now, it's not really in direct answer, though, to if we want to discuss this resolution, which I think bears discussion as well. But I think this is just more on the topic of, you know, kind of the way that Gavin has started this, which is a discussion of the plan, the reopening plan, if, if you don't mind. Is that okay? Okay. If I had a crystal ball that disclosed the state of the world in 2020 when I first ran for a seat on the board, I may have reconsidered my desires to take on this position. I'm pretty sure there are a lot of educational decision-makers who feel exactly the same way. Now it is 2020, and I desperately wish I had a crystal ball. I would look in it, and I would see, is a child at a greater risk of dying from a virus this school year or suicide? Is a child at a greater risk of suffering long-term health issues from a virus or suffering long-term mental health issues from isolation? Is a child at a greater risk of bringing home a virus and giving it to an immunocompromised family member? Or is that child at a greater risk of suffering from a loss of access to a trusted adult or a loss of connection with their peers? And how are any of these options even really options? How in the world can any human accurately decide what is a more acceptable risk for children? This is an emotional issue. And no one sitting on this board, serving as administrator or teaching in our schools, wants any negative options to fall on our children. But even though this is emotional, and even though the facts and data continue to change, as board members, we have a duty to make decisions based on facts and data. So these are the facts and data that I currently know. At a national level, the American Academy of Pediatrics strongly advocates that all policy considerations for the coming school year have the goal of children returning to be physically present in school. At a national level, the CDC advocates for a return to in-person learning, highlighting that extended school closures can lead to severe learning loss, disproportionately affect low-income households, harm children's social and emotional well-being, and inhibit the discovery of instances of home abuse and neglect. At a state level, the governor of Illinois has stated, and I quote, "Classroom learning provides necessary opportunities for our children to learn, socialize, and grow. The benefits of in-person instruction can't be overstated." Similarly, governors from other states with similar and even larger challenges than Illinois, such as New York, are encouraging school districts to return their children to in-person learning. Locally, our region, the North Suburban Region 9, has never reached an 8% positivity rate, much less for three consecutive days, which is the threshold required to perform mitigation measures in the region. In fact, our positivity rate has hovered around 5% for the past three weeks, and I got that from dph.illinois.gov in the regional metrics column. In our schools, we surveyed parents and teachers as to their preference to return to in-person learning or move to e-learning. A majority, 70% of District 220, parents requested that their children return to in-school learning, while 30% requested their children move to e-learning. That survey didn't ask the same question of the staff, but asked whether staff would be willing to assist with e-learning, and about 50% said yes. Dr. Harris did share tonight that even without students in the buildings, 30% of our staff has requested accommodations to work outside of the building. You may assume that the percentage would be higher if students were in the building, but when making such an important decision, I don't want to make assumptions. I do know I've received and read many emails from staff who disagreed with our original roadmap to reopening. And I received almost the same amount of emails from parents who disagree with our current roadmap to reopening. And I do recycle, and I wish that we were back on the days where recycling was the most important thing that we were talking about. I would like to see, though, the actual data as to the percentage of the staff requesting to return to in-person learning or a move to e-learning. Am I smaller? In my smaller social community, there's a gap emerging between those who have and have not. In my social media feed, I see countless listings of parents who are hiring teachers, tutors, putting together learning pods. They have the resources to do this, but some do not. Last night, I went to a dinner, and there were six people, including, well, than, and than me, so seven. At one point, we went around the table and talked about, what are you going to do with your kids next year, this coming year? While this is not a representative, representative sample, I can tell you in complete honesty that five of those people said they have pulled their kids from public school districts to achieve in-person learning at a private school. Many don't have this ability to do this. As school board members, we took the following oath in May. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. Yet, a gap in equity is emerging. With these national, state, local, and district facts, I believe there is a path forward to provide e-learning for those parents who requested 100% remote learning and a hybrid plan for those who prefer in-person learning. The singular mission of District 220, all over our website and our marketing, is inspire all learners to achieve excellence. What a challenge. What a difficult mission. But we, we tout it proudly. Inspire every learner, not to just be adequate, not pass, but achieve excellence. And I believe our district is up to the challenge when tasked with the logistical difficulties of providing the option of in-person learning. We were shown in our August 4th special board meeting how rooms could be configured to adhere to Lake County Department of Health six-foot separation guidelines. And the administration did put together some strategies for contact tracing. Did this look ideal? No. Is this going to be normal? No. But we're trying. We could try. Would this plan take us through the school year? Probably not, but I don't know. What if it did? There was a camp just across the border in Wisconsin this summer. It hosted over 1,000 staff and children. It hosted over 1,000 staff and children. A number of those were District 220 kids. And guess what? They did not have one case of COVID all summer. So it's possible. I can't tell you it's probable. I don't have facts to support that. But I do know a fact, which is, it is possible. My concern is that if we don't try in-person learning now, I'm afraid that we might lose the opportunity. Personally, and I hope I am so wrong, but I don't know if Illinois will start to reopen more in mid-October, when the second quarter begins. And I suspect COVID cases will be on the rise in the third quarter, when cold and flu numbers historically climb. By then, we're in fourth quarter, at what time, at which time our schools would have been closed to in-person learning for over a year. I hope this is not a scenario that's real. It makes me nervous, though. And to me, it's not an adequate plan for inspiring all learners to achieve excellence. I know we have all seen an increase in negativity during this pandemic. And I don't want my comments to be perceived as negative or insulting any of the staff or administrators that are working so hard to deal with this terrible issue that they did not ask for. So I also want to do my part to shine some light on positive aspects of some of the options that our administration has come up with. Even though I prefer a hybrid in-person learning model, I trust Dr. Harris and his team have worked diligently to provide the best e-learning model possible. And I trust it will far outperform what we saw last spring. I trust there will be some positives to e-learning, such as a continuous manner of delivering educational content, rather than starting with one method and likely having to move to another method mid-year. I trust the building principals will work towards creative ways to bring small groups of children into the buildings when possible. I trust that incoming kindergarteners, sixth graders, and freshmen will get the opportunity for some in-person orientations to acquaint themselves with the buildings. And I trust that Dr. Harris and his team will provide parents and staff with real metrics to determine when learners can return to buildings. I have to wrap this up. So let me just end with this. A very wise, I'm going to say philosopher, named Yoda, said, "Fear is the path to the dark side. Fear leads to anger. Anger leads to hate. Hate leads to suffering." And Yoda is right. Yoda had the crystal ball. So turn from the dark side. Embrace the force. I don't know how this decision will go tonight. But regardless, right now, before you forget, write a nice email to a teacher who changed your kid's life, because we all know that we can name them. Write an email to Dr. Harris for serving as a human punching bag for the past few months while dealing with the realities of what a pandemic does for you at home. Hug your kids. Hug whoever's watching this Zoom meeting, 8,000 Zoom meeting with you. And just, please remember, as a community, that life is constantly giving us challenges. But we can grow, we can learn, we can be better when we face those challenges with grace, perseverance, and love. Thank you.
This has been a very hard two, three weeks. Angela spoke very eloquently. And just to emphasize, the number of emails I got before our meeting last week who were critical of what our original plan was, and now the number of emails that we have gotten this past week are critical of what the amended plan has been. We are not going to keep, make everybody happy with whatever we choose to do. And that's what I've been losing sleep over. I feel like I was elected because I want to serve everybody and meet everybody's best interests. And somebody's going to lose in this equation. Just to put a little amendment on what people have said, quoting things like the AAP and the National CDC, one word that has been left out of these statements is safely. We want our kids back in school if you can do it safely. Education in person is absolutely the best way to be. If I, just step me back a second. If I were asked the question that everyone was asked in this survey, I don't have any kids right now in 220. I would vote for in-person learning. But when I'm sitting back here, I need to worry about the safety of our district. And at this time, with COVID increasing, it is increasing. Especially in Kane County, where more of our needier students are, the ones who really need to be in person, are the ones right now who are at much higher risk of bringing COVID into the schools. Everyone's read the papers, whether we're talking about the Lake Zurich football team, whether we're talking about schools that have gone back into session over the last week, and have had to close because they had so many COVID classes, or COVID students. And they did such a, they were so serious about quarantining that they just had to close down classrooms. In Georgia, people quoted even in Israel, where they opened and then closed and then opened again. And now they're closing schools because they're just unable to, to limit the spread of COVID. We do not know how serious COVID is. But we do know that it is highly contagious. Influenza, we have a vaccine, and we have a treatment for it. Measles and mumps and those things that are immunization preventable are preventable. We don't have that same thing with COVID right now. And as was mentioned by Dr. Harris, now locally, we have a large number of kids who have come out positive for COVID. Most of them were not symptomatic, but they went and gave it to their parents and their coaches. So now we have adults who are getting COVID from kids. So it is contagious, unfortunately. So I, I have some challenges for, for Dr. Harris as we move on here. I, I really feel that starting out on a virtual basis is going to be the best way to get started with the school year. But I don't want that to be our long-term plan. So I want to make sure that we have an effort to get most, if not all, kids personally engaged in the 220 schools from day one. I think we've talked about that. I want to see concrete plans on that. I want to find, and again, I think we have a plan here, but I, I want to have a plan to safely offer in-person learning, activities, sports, and therapies as soon as possible. Some kids hopefully will get it right away. Others may not get some of the in-person benefits until later in September or October. I feel that before we can have total in-person learning, we need more available, efficient testing. As a physician, I'm having a terrible time getting kids tested and getting their parents tested and getting efficient results. It does nobody any good to get tested and have to wait a week for results, especially if you're doing tracer following, follow-up and quarantining appropriately. For example, right now, the University of Illinois has come up with a system where you can use some saliva and get a test within a couple hours. They haven't made that available to everybody yet, and hopefully, that's something that will happen very soon. I also want to see a significant down slope in the illness curve before we feel comfortable letting our kids loose in the schools at recess and, you know, in the classroom, and especially exposing the adults in their lives, whether it's their parents, they get it at school, they bring it home to parents and grandparents, or exposing teachers. I want to see a, a significant down slope. It hasn't happened. I, I wrote on my Facebook post in July, I challenged parents. I said, "Now is the time to start working on the down slope. Teach your kids to mask. Be careful when you go on vacation. Make sure that you're not having big parties." And I think most of you may not have read that, but, but have been doing that. But there's a good number of parents, unfortunately, that haven't been doing that. And their teenage kids are out having parties. And that's only going to increase the curve, which is not the direction we want to go. So I, it's not popular. I understand that, and it breaks my heart. But right now, I want to support remote learning until we can improve the metrics and make sure that when we send your kids back to school on a more full-time basis, they're going to be safe.
So I feel how hard this is. And I feel really bad that everything's changing so quickly. And it's just, it's such a difficult decision that there's such disagreement in our community on. There's strong feelings. And all of us are feeling very torn by families, parents, friends, teachers, staff, kids. And it's, it's regrettable that we were ready to open, and it, it gave an expectation. And it makes it even harder to pull back in the community because people were expecting. And, you know, Dr. Altshuler might agree, but the unknown is a lot more stressful in a lot of situations than when the decision that's maybe not what you want is made. It's, it's a lot more stressful. I've seen my children, they don't know, they don't know, they're worried. Parents are worried. And it's just, it's really, really hard. And as a big school district, it's so much more difficult for us with the number of students and the square footage of the buildings. When Illinois changed the plan and said, "You have to put walls in, and you have to have fire codes to, to have more than 50 kids in one space like this, in a cafeteria," and said, "You can't just kind of put a divider up and make this into four rooms." It makes it mathematically impossible to do this. And it's, it's very, very hard. And the other problem in our, one of the other many problems with our district is the busing, because so many kids take the bus. I mean, in other cities or towns or suburbs, if the kids get there on their own, like Evanston, it's not the school district's concern or issue of getting them all on the bus or off the bus. You know, is one of the many, many examples. And, you know, I'm tugged, as Angela said really eloquently, that there are disparities. You know, different families can provide different choices in this community. And as a school district, we can provide education, but we can't provide everything in the world. So it's, it's very difficult. And, you know, reading emails, communicating with parents and with teachers. You know, I was very uncomfortable with e-learning last time. Everyone was. It was designed for three snow days. It wasn't designed for months. You know? And so there's been time to work on this, get this better. Teachers have been training. The more I communicate with some teachers, with some administration, with families, PTO members, there's, there's confidence with a lot of people that this can be way better. It's not proven, we haven't seen it. But there's an awful lot of work going on behind the scenes. There's an awful lot of tired people in this district working really hard to do their best. Is everything perfect? No. I mean, we have to, we have to realize that it's not going to be exactly what we want, no matter what scenario we go back to. The videos and the pictures of the what it could look like at the town hall meeting and at the board meeting last week, they were disheartening. I, I admit, I feel that, you know? We all feel that. Do we want our families to be safe and healthy? You know, do we want our kids to be healthy? We do. And sometimes that comes with harder choices. I think we're going to vote on this tonight. And, you know, it's going to be difficult. And everyone is trying to make the best decision they can today because tomorrow, we'll have different information. And it keeps changing. And there's got to be a plan to go forward with, so.
So it's hard to go last. Especially because I respect all the people up here, and I respect everyone's point of view. And there are pieces of what everyone said that I agree with. So I listened very intently with everyone else last Tuesday as Dr. Harris explained how, how he made the decision to pivot to distance learning for the beginning of the school year. I've received emails from people in our community advocating for their choice of how to start the school year, hearing from those who want to bring students into the building, for those who are opposed. Sunday, the headline of the Daily Herald had an article related to the opening of schools and the challenges. Naperville 203 Superintendent Dan Bridges said, "Challenges with symptom screening, lunch without masks, managing social distancing, and having 50 students together on a bus, as well as separating groups of 50 students from in cafeterias, led them to change from their hybrid model to remote learning." Stevenson citing the need to quarantine as greatly disruptive and could result in quarantining of dozens of people for each confirmed case, led them to their decision to distance learning. They had never even announced another decision. They started with distance learning. Libertyville Vernon Hills High School, 128. "I can't ignore and dismiss that some students are going to get sick." Libertyville High School Principal Tom, can't pronounce his last name, I apologize. "I can't ignore that some staff are going to get sick." So I did some further research, perhaps spending more time online than I should have. But what I did is just stayed on the Daily Herald's website and kept putting in reopening plans. And what I found were over 40 school districts who had intended to start in some form of in-person instruction had switched to remote learning. That includes almost all of our neighbors, with the exception of Lake Zurich. It includes Crystal Lake, Mundaline, Deerfield, Highland Park, Hawthorne, East Aurora, 211, 214, 62, 203, 204, 15, 54. The list goes on. There are some that are still holding out hope for a hybrid or some sort of in-person instruction. And I'm going to be watching those. And at our last meeting, I asked Dr. Harris to watch those. Nutria is one of those. But however, I will let you know that they have a special board meeting scheduled for tomorrow night. So I don't know what that outcome will be. As of yesterday, the American Academy of Pediatrics and the Children's Hospital Association in a weekly report that compiles state-by-state data on COVID-19 cases in children, found that between July 9th and August 6th, there were 179,990 new child cases, an increase of 90% in child cases over four weeks. Went on further to say, "The data, while limited because of the reliance on how each state reports its cases, underscores the urgent need to control the virus in communities so schools can open." As I listened to Dr. Harris's presentation last week, I have to admit, I have concerns about managing large spaces like middle school and high school students during lunch, PE and other large group situations like buses. We transport most of our students. I also have concerns about contact, contact tracing, and still can't say it. And numbers of students and staff required to quarantine if there would be a case in one of our schools. Using Dr. Harris's six-foot social distancing examples, a student in one classroom would require at least four other people to also quarantine. For a middle school or high school student, we would have to multiply that times eight because they have eight periods in the day. So for one student, that would impact 32 people at minimum. We're not in actuary, so I'm just guessing that with 1,200 to 1,400 people in each of our middle schools, there likely may be three to four cases. And that equates to somewhere between 100 and 130 people per building forced to quarantine for three to four cases. The high school has three times the enrollment of each middle school with minimum numbers of quarantine requiring, requiring for anywhere between 300 to 500 people using that three-to-four-case scenario. Add them together, and you get 500 to 760 people. The dominos, dominos just kept falling so quickly when doing the math. So during our last meeting, our first in-person meeting since March, a number of adults in the room were not wearing their masks properly. And I was, I have been asked by my fellow board league, board colleagues, to interrupt our meetings if this should happen again anytime. And as I thought of that, all I could think of is, how might it be for a classroom full of students? Because we're adults, we know. Many have referred to the CDC and their article, "The Importance of Reopening America's Schools in the Fall." And it says, "Aside from a child's home, no other setting has a more influence on a child's health and well-being than their school. The in-person school environment does the following: Provides educational instruction." The in-person school environment does the following: provides educational instruction, supports the development of social and emotional skills, creates a safe environment for learning, addresses nutritional needs, and facilitates physical activity." However, in their conclusion, they also say, "Reopening schools creates opportunity to invest in the education, well-being, and future of one of America's greatest assets, our children," something I believe all of us up here agree with. But it goes on to say, "While taking every precaution to protect students, teachers, staff, and all of their families." So I believe the natural tension created by this statement to reopen schools and to take every precaution to protect students, teachers, staffs, and their families is at the root of my angst. My first choice is to have students in the classroom. However, this time, I'm not concerned that there's a safe way to do so. However, Dr. Harris, I implore you and your talented staff to do your absolute best to address the needs mentioned by the CDC. And I, you've said that you will already, but I can't state it firmly enough, especially those related to SEO. Are there any other comments or questions? Roll call please.
Penny Casimir?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Leah Colister Lazari?
Yes.
Gavin Newman?
No.
Angela Wilcox?
No.
Question passes. Is there a motion to approve the construction manager contract with Pepper Construction Company?
Can I introduce Nate?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I forgot about it.
Yes, I forgot about it too. We're going to, no motion yet. We're going to introduce...
So, I forgot at the end of the consent agenda that I said I was going to do was to introduce Nate. So Nate, I've already shared your credentials, I've shared your background. Welcome to 220. Any comments that you'd like to make for the board?
I wish we could see your face.
I'll give you a key.
Oh, thank you.
Just congratulations. First of all, just congratulations to the 220 community on your boldness. The decision to allocate resources for positions such as this is amazing. And I'm so thankful and honored to be here before you in that role. I had the privilege of spending the day with my 109-year-old grandmother. It was her birthday today. We had a celebration for her and to tell her about this opportunity and then on top of that, have the opportunity as a family to experience Senator Harris being, you know, selected as a nominee was amazing. She waited 109 years for that and for me to be in a role like this for her is amazing. So I thank you and I look forward to all the great work that we're going to do and just thank you, that's it.
Welcome Nate.
I apologize.
No, it's okay.
Welcome, welcome. Now, is there a motion to approve the construction manager contract with Pepper Construction Company?
Moved.
Is there...
Yeah, just a couple of comments and I'm going to ask Dave to jump in here. As the board knows, we have been working on this contract tonight with Pepper Construction that's going to be our construction manager. And Lance Trish is here and happy to see Lance. And we have been working on this contract and Dave put together some of the key points here in the contract. And if there's any questions, you know, they are listed there. If you want to read all the other documents, that's fine too, but the summary of the contract is available to the board. Dave, did you have any other specifics you wanted to point out here? Yeah.
He can come up if he wants.
He's got the mic.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. I do want to make just a comment that applies both to this contract plus the next action that you'll consider, which is the architect contract. What we have for both of these, for your consideration, are master agreements. And the master agreements lay out the terms and conditions that we would have both construction management and architecture services on behalf of the district. They don't in and of themselves authorize specific work for the district. That specific work would come to the board for consideration on a project-by-project basis. So what you will see over time as we go forward are specific projects that would come to you. And they would be coordinated so that you'd be seeing an architecture project and a construction manager project and the opportunity to approve those specific project amendments. In the case of the Pepper Construction Contract and the CM Agreement, that agreement would lay out the specific pricing that's associated with that. So a portion of that pricing is fixed in the master contract. There is something called general conditions and so general conditions varies project-by-project. In the case of the DLR Contract, and I know I'm jumping ahead, but I'm trying to save, make it efficient for you, there we have negotiated an overall not-to-exceed fee on behalf of the district. The individual project amendments may vary, might be higher, might be lower, but there's a guarantee as we look at our construction work based on the $147 million approved referendum, that with DLR, there is a maximum not-to-exceed fee to do all the work that is outlined and approved by the board and the community. So I just wanted to point that out, that you'll see these periodic project amendments that will come forward for your approval, both from Pepper and from DLR.
Are there any questions from the board? Roll call please.
Evan Newman? Leah Colister Lazari?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Penny Casimir? Barry Altshuler?
Question passes. Is there a motion to approve the architect contract with DLR Group?
Second.
I think Dave already shared his thoughts on that. Anything else to add, Dave?
Any questions from the board? Roll call please.
Leah Colister Lazari?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox? Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Penny Casimir?
Yes.
Gavin Newman?
Is there a motion to approve the 2021 school calendar?
Moved. Second.
Hey, I'm just reminding everyone, you know, there's been a little bit of a change to this because we've already technically approved the calendar. Are there any questions? Roll call please.
Penny Casimir?
Yes.
Gavin Newman? Leah Colister Lazari?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Question passes. Is there a motion to approve the ejector pump bid?
Moved.
Second.
Questions from the board?
I would just like to state that this is our first referendum project that we are approving here this evening. This is the sewer ejection pump at Barrington High School. And it is long overdue.
I'll just remind the board too, this was one of the things that was of great concern at the high school because it has failed and that's not a good thing. So, we, you know, we've had a couple of discussions, we knew this was coming, so. Any other questions?
I think what question I had is...
Go ahead. I was going to say, are they comfortable with this two-week window? I mean, we have been given a very tight timeframe to get this done. I don't know if that leaves them a lot of wiggle room or error room or if they find anything surprise in there that might take more time. Are we confident that we'll be able to start school on time, whatever that is, January 6th or 7th?
Great question. It's one that I know all of us ask on the staff side, but I know our architect and our construction manager are confident that we can get it done during that time. Lance, do you want to comment on that? He's going to turn it on for you there. Start talking.
So Barry, you were asking about the schedule for the sewer ejector pump project. It is a short timeframe. It's like from the 23rd of December to the 6th or 5th or 6th of January, but we do intend to do a fair amount of due diligence work before the 23rd in preparation. We have to remove some walls just to get a new ejector pit in there. So we're going to build a temporary partition there and start to try to do some of that work prior to the 23rd to help facilitate making that process go faster because literally it's 10 days of physical work over that Christmas and New Year's break because obviously you lose two days to holidays. But that's why it's a good thing that we're proving it tonight. We can get all the submittals, start to get all the materials procured. It's going to take better than probably six or eight weeks just to get the materials from the time that we place the order tomorrow, so.
It's a custom fit.
Oh, yeah.
It's custom.
You answered my first question that Barry had asked, but the second question is, there's a fairly large delta between some of the bids that were received back. So are we comfortable? Is it same quality? I mean, is everything the same bid spec and the whole nine yards?
It's a great question Gavin. And I think the funny part is, is that I truly think that the reason there's such a variance is when people walk in and look at it, it's scary. What's the existing system is scary. No one has seen it in like 30 years. Everyone's just like, I think it's a fear factor. Was in there three times. They went in and helped us budget it. Once we got original drawings, we brought them in to do a budget before we put it on the street. Then they came back and did another walkthrough and another walkthrough and we helped them find some of the subs to help facilitate because it's a package deal. So yeah, I know we're comfortable, but I can, I think a lot of it just has to do with, I don't know if you've been in there, but it's...
And their resume clearly speaks for itself on their website. They've done a lot of work for a lot of very big companies and school districts. And it was just strange to me.
Yeah, absolutely. DeFranco is a great firm.
It's just such a unique project. And some companies, I think, chose to do more due diligence than others, right? Is that a fair statement?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So that's why I think you may see a fair answer.
Any other questions? Roll call please.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler? Penny Casimir?
Yes.
Gavin Newman?
Yes.
Leah Colister Lazari?
Yes.
Question passes. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of Board Policies 2:20, 4:180, 6:290?
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's the only discussion I would add, policy committee perspective, since we just, the resolution was recently approved. Policy 4180 is more restrictive, I believe, than the resolution that was just approved.
Does the resolution supersede the policy?
It does as written, yes. The answer is yes because that's a separate resolution for this circumstance.
Okay.
Whereas the board policy would still be in play under any other normal circumstances. So the resolution is written as such that it supersedes this.
Was there a termination date on the resolution? I can't remember.
No, it's for the 2021 school year.
Just 20, okay. So there terminates 21.
So it's into the school year.
Are we still comfortable moving forward with approval of this one?
I suppose yes, but our whole goal has always been to identify our policies and have them written how we're actually doing things in real time. And in this case, I think this policy is not how we are intending on approaching school decisioning during the
That resolution supersedes some other policies as well, which is the intent of it. Not just this one. There's others that are there as well.
How does the...
Craig, what do you think about this? Is this something that we should take back I think at a minimum, we should maybe reference the resolution in the policies that are superseded by same, right?
Could do that.
In case someone's...
The only thing is, I guess I would just, from a different perspective to consider, right, is that we normally don't create our policies for a single situation. You know, they're usually supposed to be sort of more of our roadmap. And so while the resolution is a single situation, if we were to go back and have the policy agree with the resolution, we would, at some point, we have to be very careful about redoing our policy to reflect a new practice.
Yeah, I don't think that we rewrite the policy. My point was just to refer to the resolution almost as we do in legal references in the policy, subject to the parameters set forth and resolution dated blah, blah, blah. And I know, I think from my perspective, what I don't like to see in policies are dates, you know, where we have to go back and then change it later.
Exactly.
But we do have some policies that we manage in that way. I mean, there are a few laws that are, you know, going to be enacted. We have date restrictions in our policy. You know, Sandra and I typically try to avoid those, but I know we looked at one recently where we just couldn't really avoid it and, you know, just put it on our list of something to revisit when, you know, the current legislation is no longer effective and we need to go back and, you know, update the policy so that it's, you know, accurate according to the date. So I don't have a problem with going back and revisiting if, you know, the board would like us to, you know, kind of take a, you know, it's unique, it's a unique circumstance.
Okay. I guess the one thing that I would request then is that since the resolution was, our approval of the resolution was recommended by our attorney, perhaps that we have some legal weigh-in on how the two complement one another, if they should complement one another, something perhaps your community can think of.
We can have forensic review of, which we did not do.
As a policy committee, so we could have it reviewed before then?
Okay. So should I make an amended, did I make the motion?
Well, I'll just, I'll ask, is there an amended motion to remove, or no, to approve second reading of Board Policy 2:20 and 6:290 only?
Moved.
Any other discussion? Thanks for being willing to do that. Roll call please.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Penny Casimir?
Yes.
Gavin Newman? Leah Colister Lazari?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
So when that policy comes back to us, if there's no changes, can you just note it as a second reading then and remind us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the superintendent search firm contract?
Moved.
Okay. On July 23rd, there were five of us that met and interviewed three superintendent search firms. And School Exec Connect rose to the top and everyone agreed that this was the firm that we would like to pursue. I got a contract from them. It was reviewed by our legal counsel and it is in front of us. Are there any questions?
Just wondering a little bit about process. So assuming we pass this, what's the next step? Will they be coming to one of our board meetings or?
Well, as soon as we approve this, I will, I'll call them tomorrow and we'll... That was the next step, to try to figure out how we're going to proceed, to set some expectations for board members, interactions with them, and time, you know, the time that would be required and perhaps some meetings. So more to come.
Okay, that's fine.
Any other questions?
Our attorneys looked over this contract, right?
Yes.
Right?
Okay, roll call please.
Angela Wilcox? Penny Casimir?
Yes.
Gavin Newman?
Yes.
Leah Colister Lazari?
Yes.
Yes.
Question passes. Okay, our first discussion item, the tentative 2021 budget discussion.
I'd like to invite Dave Vine and Sarah Lager to come forward and we are going to present the tentative budget to the board this evening. Board members, you have three documents attached here to the agenda.
Document is a budget memo with a narrative that explains some of the circumstances and unique...
unique changes or issues with this budget. The second document is the state budget form and the third document is a detailed line-by-line item of the budget that board has used many years in the past. So we will go ahead and get started. I know Dave and Sarah have a presentation. I think Sarah is going to be driving this, right? With her Mac, correct? Dave's going to take the lead.
Board members, this is Sarah's first live.
Board meeting with you and I assured her that you don't bite and that she wouldn't even see any of your things out if you're wearing masks, so.
We are smiling.
All right. We're, oh, okay, great. So I was just waiting, I'm like, I was waiting for it to come up. That's where the jokes came in, but I didn't know you guys could see it on the side. All right, terrific. Thank you. So game plan for the presentation, I'll do a quick recap of FY '20. We'll review the legal requirements for adopting budget for FY '21. I'll do an overview of the revenues and expenditures and do a quick summary at the end. So here's, here's the recap. You might notice a theme with some things on some of my slides that Sarah and I have together, COVID-19 is a little bit of the recap from last year. So that certainly had an impact on how our year played out. And board, I don't need to remind you of the conversations we had around transportation services and other things as we were finishing up the year that certainly caused some changes in, in where things were ending. The upshot is that our, our local revenues were a little bit lighter than expected. Our expenditures were also lighter than expected and, you know, we had talked previously in some of the updates as to where we were tracking toward the end of the year that we anticipated salaries and benefits to come in under budget. They did. We talked about transportation being another large driver that was going to come in under budget and it did. And the preliminary results right now are that we will run a larger-than-normal surplus. And, but I, I want to remind you that as always, at this point in time, we haven't finished our audit. So the audit is underway. It is going well. We always have some audit adjustments that take place. So on this next slide, what you'll see is that right now we're projecting a surplus of about 4.1 million. That's the current number. Now each day, as Sarah and I were, were working on this, we had some changes on some of our numbers. So, you know, so it's, it's a little bit evolutionary as we continue to identify items associated with the audit or that our auditors identified. So we already know that there are some items that, that will be moving homes from an accounting standpoint that may affect this, this net surplus at the end. All right, as we look to this next year, just as a quick review of the legal adopt, legal requirements for adopting a budget. School districts are required to adopt a budget by the end of the first quarter of the year, that's September 30th. And that process includes a consideration of a tentative budget that then is available for public inspection for at least 30 days, a published, a, a public hearing on the budget along with a notice of publication. It's one of those, you know, apparently the, the newspaper lobby is still fairly strong in Springfield, so we actually have to pay for a newspaper publication of that, that we have the public hearing and then consideration of the final budget for adoption. So in the schedule that we have in place, the approach is similar. So tonight is consideration of the tentative budget. We would publish notice of that. Then at the end of this week, we would conduct a public hearing at the first board meeting in September and then consideration of final budget at the second board meeting in September, at which point we would make that budget available for, on our website and file as required. All right, so as we look at FY '21, this is just a big pie chart, just as a reminder as to how our revenue breaks down. No surprise here, north of, well, it's about 87% of our, of our total revenue is local sources. That's a combination of property tax levies, fees and other local sources. The state generates approximately 9% and the federal government generates approximately 4% of our overall revenue. So we're very heavily weighted toward local taxes here in Barrington. That's generally true in our part of the Chicago area. It does vary as you get to certain districts around the Chicagoland area and then further downstate where they have much heavier reliance on state revenue rather than local. But for us, we're pretty typical for our area with a very heavy reliance on local property taxes. The, and I need to start this section, you'll notice the first bullet point again, COVID-19. So this budget is reflective of a relatively normal school year. This is not a budget that incorporates a bunch of knowledge or insight into distance learning or some presumption around what the board was going to do at its, at the meeting tonight. So what we have is a normal budget and, and there are some options which we discussed at the, at the finance committee. You know, one is, you know, at this point, after you consider a tentative budget, we can make changes between tentative and final. Do we factor in now that we've got a decision around distance learning? Factor in some of those things. The upshot is that I'm certain that by the time we get to the end of the school year, some things will have changed. And this year, more so than any other, that they will change in a material way that would drive the district to consider adopting an amended budget. As I've talked with my colleagues, you know, this is something that most of us are assuming is that we're going to get to the spring and many of us will be bringing amended budgets in. So in our case, we're, we're considering adopted, moving forward with distance learning with a commitment to reexamine that in October. And it's possible we may return to more students onsite than we had in the first few months or maybe fewer or maybe all. I, I don't know how that will play out. That will have budget impacts for us. And if we engage in distance learning for a longer period of time, that has different kinds of impacts for us. So we don't know exactly which way that's going to go. The obligation is however, to adopt a budget. And what we talked about in, in the finance committee was we have this budget and realistically, this is the budget that we're able to put together. We've got some good ideas. This is some of the things that might change in the event of distance learning. But again, we don't know how long. There are a variety of ancillary services that are difficult to quantify right now, things around transportation, food service, as to what those numbers will be. So what we may be doing, if you approve this tentative budget and that we would likely bring this back with any adjustments that, that we know we have to make, there are some minor things that we, we certainly need to adjust as we have identified, but we'd bring that back as a final budget with the understanding that both at the finance committee level, we will be watching our, our expenditures and our revenues on a, you know, you know, each meeting, we'll be taking a look at those to see how we're tracking, both against our, our budget as it stands today and what we might anticipate based on any changes in instructional delivery that would happen. And then that we'd be bringing an amended budget to you later for consideration. All right. So with all of that, and that will save a little time when we get to operating expenses. So what we have, our levy receipts budgeted approximately 2.5% more than FY '20. That's consistent with where, what we would have expected based on CPI numbers that are in there as well as our forecast. Something that's a little bit different, we have some unemployment. You know, we've got much larger projected unemployment costs based on the, the way the state of Illinois has, has, is applying the unemployment rules. So we are looking at a fairly significant expense, but we're also looking at both a, well, actually I'll let Sarah describe it. I think it's sort of a 50-50 deal on how that money comes back to us.
Yes. So as of right now, the Illinois Department of Employment Security guidance is stating that we will not be charged for 50% of our unemployment liability and then the remaining 50% will be reimbursed by the federal government. So we should be receiving new guidance soon from IDES on how to apply for that reimbursement. The last pull that we had was about $2.25 million in unemployment liability. Only a very small portion of that is not COVID-related, so half of that is 1.1, which we would not pay and the other half would be the 1.1 that would be reimbursed.
So we have that 1.1 in as, as an additional expense and as an additional revenue. So that's something new. It's, I mean, it's way above and beyond our normal unemployment costs. So, but that's in, it doesn't affect the bottom line, but it is in there as a wash. We are, you know, pursuant to board guidance, we're assuming four categorical payments, D-Sub issuance remaining in operating funds. That will be something that we'll be talking about over the next couple of months as we go through our, what has been a two-year cycle. So it's the two-year cycle to have that conversation. But pursuant to board guidance on the budget, we have that remaining in operating funds. My recommendation will be, right now it's sitting in, in O&M. I think we really need to redirect it on the final budget into Transportation Education Fund, so it sits in an appropriate place to support our programming. And then federal revenue up slightly from prior year actuals based on increase in our IDEA flow-through grant. And then of course, transportation revenue down. And board, just as a reminder, I'm sure you know this well, but, you know, we've got this lagging issue. So in it, last year we had lower than typical transportation rev, expense, which means this year we have lower revenue because it's a year lag on the reimbursement from the state. This year, I'm anticipating again that we will have lower than, you know, based on distance learning, we will have lower-than-normal transportation expense this year, which then will push out to next year where again, we'll be talking about, okay, lower-than-normal revenue because of that lag. All right. So on the, I just want to mention on the non-operating revenue side, now normally we talk, we really focus on the operating side, but this year we, we did do a $50 million bond issue and that happened in July, so it's part of this fiscal year. So what we, what we'll be doing is depositing those funds into the Capital Projects Fund and then expenses that are related to our referendum will come right back out of the Capital Projects Fund. Now, board members, just as a reminder, the referendum funds can only be used for the purposes that were approved by the voters during the election. So on, on the referendum question. So, and I know that you've had some questions that have come up over recent board meetings about, well, can't we use some of the referendum funds to be able to support distance learning or other things? And we're not able to do that. It must be used for the purposes that were approved by the voters based on the referendum question. Now we've created a separate sub-fund within Capital Projects for the $50 million bond issue that we did. We're anticipating two more issuances until we get to a total of 147 million. Those will also go into separate sub-funds within the Capital Projects Fund. That way we can track the receipt of all of the dollars from the referendum and for each issuance, exactly how those funds were spent back out so that we have full accountability and management of those funds. So when we take a look at our budget overall, so from an all-fund basis, we're anticipating, you'll see coming up on the slide, about 13 or 14 million dollars worth of referendum expenses between now and June 30th. So the difference, we got 50 million in, we'll only spend a portion of that out before we get to the end of June. Actually, it'll be a fair bit of construction next summer. Most of that won't hit before the end of the fiscal year. So on an all-fund basis, we'll, we'll drive a large surplus, but all that money's going to be sitting in the Capital Projects Fund. So that, you know, that's related to the referendum. So I just wanted to mention that to you. On the expenditure side, so this should look fairly unsurprising to you. It's pretty consistent with what we've seen before. So we have about three-quarters of our expenses are salaries and benefits. So it's 59% in salaries, 14% in benefits. And then we've got purchased services. You know, in our case, a fair bit of the purchased services revolves around the transportation fund where we, we expend a significant amount of money to transport our students around our district. And then supplies, capital. The other primarily involves our out-of-district tuition that we pay for students receiving special education services at specific facilities outside of the district. That makes up the bulk of that. So, you know, here I already talked about the, the COVID-19 distance learning. So what we have, so I'm not going to provide any more comments on that right at this point. Salaries and benefits up about 2.2, 2.3%. The combination of supplies, purchase services and capital, they're budgeted 4.9% up. And you might say to yourself, why, Dave? That seems sort of big and more than what I was expecting. Well, there's a couple of things going on. First of all, there's the unemployment insurance. So that's in there. So that's, that makes up about 3.3% of that number. We also have CARES Act expenses, so which is sitting both on the revenue and the expense side. So our CARES Act funding is about 1.7% on the expense side. So that again is offset by the revenue. When we take those out, what we have is actually a net decline of 0.1%. On the memo, just, so you're, you're clear, the cover memo that we provided for this, it mentions 0.6%. I had a little miscue with Sarah where I asked her to write about the education fund and we, so we ended up, overall, it's 0.1% and so it's correct on this graphic, so it's not the 0.6%. So I'm sorry about that typo. We also have transportation up 2.9%. Of course, where we actually anticipate that we would end the year with some distance learning is below that. We will be transporting students from day one, so it will not be a complete abeyance. We will be transporting students, will also be providing transportation for meals, to be able to distribute meals for our students who are engaged in distance learning. So. All right. Again, here on the non-operating side, I already mentioned this, again, we've got approximately $16 million worth of referendum expense, referendum project expenses budgeted. So overall, we'll show a surplus because of the difference between the 50 and the 16. And again, the funds can only be used for the, the approved referendum question purposes. So we take a look at, you know, how does this shake out right now? We're, we're showing a just over $400,000 surplus. I can tell you that number will change a little bit before we get to the, to the final budget. For example, you did just approve a search firm, so we'll drop that expense in as an example of something that, that will be an update that we have in there. So.
It's already money budgeted for all?
We, we, there, there is a block of money. We'll review that to make sure. We actually took a look at that within the last couple of days to see, did we believe that this was going to be spending that's consistent with past spending and there'll be other stuff that won't happen and this will happen instead? We'll take a look at that, though.
I, I thought that you and I had had a conversation. You tried to make sure that there was some money in there, double check.
I'll, I'll review that and, and so Dr. Harris will, will confer on that and if there needs to be an adjustment, we will make that. So.
Shouldn't there be a referendum surplus in those numbers too or no?
So because this is the operating budget only, it excludes debt service, excludes capital projects. Yeah, that's why you don't see it here. Normally, we don't talk about that as much. You know, I certainly look at it, Sarah looks at it, but most of our conversations are around the operating funds. But our state budget form and, you know, some other work that we do involves taking a look at that budget overall. And I just wanted to mention it because it's, it might not have been something I thought that was at the forefront of your mind, that there's a timing difference sense on the, the bond issue and the expenses, so. All right, next steps. I think I pretty much mentioned these to you already. If we move forward with this budget, as a tentative budget, we would have the budget hearing beginning of September, final budget to consider middle of September, and then we would do our filing and post it. Board members, with that, I would be very pleased to have Sarah answer any questions for you.
Any questions for Dave?
I would say, you know, we discussed the finance committee. I mean, this, this budget is, we need to post something. It's not the budget is going to look like or quite frankly, the financial outcome of our district during this operating and learning environment. We just don't know. We don't know how much it's going to cost or quite frankly, you know, just look at kindergarten enrichment, for example. I've heard a lot of families are saying, I'm not paying to have my child be on Zoom in a kindergarten class. Well, guess what? We still have all those kindergarten teachers on staff. Nothing we can do about it. So there's a lot of things that have to take place between now and then. I've challenged Dave and his team to really report back to the board monthly as they're making decisions on, on an expense perspective and make sure they're tracking closely on a revenue standpoint to make sure we're not getting out of whack and, as opposed to waiting for a quarter. They promised us they would do that, so I'm, I'm encouraged, but. They promised us they would do that, so I'm encouraged, but we just don't know. I mean, there's just so much uncertainty, so the reality is, we have to approve something, but I strongly believe there's going to be amended budget, and that may not even be close to what the real financial outcome for the year is anyway, so. Unfortunately, we're kind of flying blind until we actually get into this remote environment, see what the actual costs are around transportation, food, and overall, just kind of staffing costs.
I guess I'd just like to add to, just to create a broader picture, if you will, you know, I just want to remind everyone that we did, you know, several months ago, over the summer, actually take a look at what our assumptions were driving this budget, and the board did pull back, and as you indicate in your memo, you know, we asked flatten out expenses, things like that, but one of the things we did was decrease the anticipated tax receipts.
That's correct.
So hopefully, we were conservative enough, so, but I do agree that you're probably going to be coming back to us because we're kind of in the great unknown.
Gavin did a nice job summarizing it, Leah, you were part of that conversation as well. There's some pretty significant assumptions on both sides of this budget, revenues and expenditures right now, and we're definitely going to have to monitor this, you know, at this table, not only in finance committee, but in this table, on a pretty regular basis this year. And I do anticipate an amended budget sometime in, you know, the springtime. That's when we would have a better sense on it, we'll have to go through the same process to attend, you know, to have a hearing, and then make the amended budget, because it's just, it's more of a guess this year than ever, based on expense side and on revenue side, to your point. It really is.
I thought just because of the importance of it, the dollars that are at stake, I thought it was more of a board decision than a finance committee decision, so I just thought it would be good, not a full presentation, but just to give the board a quick update, just kind of where we stand on a monthly basis.
And as part of our process of putting it on display and everything, we should see it.
I do believe this budget's a very conservative budget, though, meaning when I say that, I believe we've got, you know, some significant expenditure cuts that we incorporated into this budget, the board directed staff to do, I think that will put us in a favorable position, at least at this point.
The other thing we talked about in the committee that we thought would be helpful, can you hear me? That we thought would be helpful for the whole board to talk about a little bit was fees for the school year, that, you know, a suggestion was to, if we went to remote learning to start with, to look at how we changed the fees last time, you know, things that didn't happen, like student parking and things like that. But then we also talked about, well, you know, do we want to talk about or think about reducing the general student fees in this situation, since families may be, you know, updating their internet at home, or they may be getting desks in their family room, or different things like that, do we want to, as a board, discuss whether a certain percentage or, you know, reduction in fees or not, and also look at how that would affect our budget, you know, and that we thought that was a board discussion.
Well, I, as a board member, I support doing something, but it would be helpful for me if perhaps the finance committee could come to us with a couple tiers or options, and help us understand what the ramifications of waiving certain fees are.
We'll see that at the next meeting as a discussion item.
Yeah, our issue tonight was, we weren't sure about where we were going at this meeting.
Finance committee recommended we put that item on the next agenda.
Oh, so you've already done that?
Yeah.
Well, we talked about it, but we didn't, you know, there's an awful lot of what-ifs, like, if the first quarter is remote, what happens to transportation, food service, you know, staff, the biggies in a budget? And do we go with more budget suggestions, or do we go with this budget for now, and then talk about those things, and talk about the fees, and bring it back to you?
I think the finance committee believes it's a board discussion around fees. I think that what we didn't have for our meeting today was, what is the financial impact if you were to reduce our fees by a percentage, whatever that may or may not be? So we'd ask the finance team to come back to us with a couple of tiers, if you will, and you can, you can kind of say, all right, this is something that we can roll into our budget and feel good about, or we just don't have the room. But we didn't have those numbers to make that recommendation to come to the full board, so we just said, bring everything that you would to us, to the board.
Okay. I'm glad that you've already requested that information, though.
But it probably is, to their point, a full board discussion, because there will be implications on the revenue side if you do do a reduction, so that will change it.
I just thought if you guys could vet it, it sounds like you already did earlier today, so it's good. Any other questions?
Thank you for doing this, this is an ever-changing conundrum, as everything.
Thank you, yeah, this was a particularly challenging budget. Board members, can, so do I have your approval to post this as our tentative budget? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next discussion item, a referendum construction update.
You're excited tonight, yes?
Yep, please gather around the microphones if you'd like.
Craig?
And pull them toward you if they're not close enough.
Josh is going to help us out here getting set up.
Can you introduce?
We are excited to have both DLR and Pepper here tonight, along with Craig Winkelman, who's a lead staff person in this project. I know several board members participated in the conversations we had with both Prairie and Station over the last couple of weeks, so I'm going to turn it over to Craig. Josh is here with DLR, and going to walk through some of the conversations that happened, and update the board where we're at with the middle school additions. Craig?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Harris. As you mentioned, we have Josh Tremblay, our lead designer from DLR, he has the cool software on his computer, so he's going to kind of drive the presentation tonight. And then we also have Dennis Bain, client lead from DLR Group, and then Lance Trish from Pepper Construction. So we're going to present, but we're all here to answer questions tonight. It's been an exciting summer. Obviously, the last time we presented to the board, we talked about Grove Avenue, the two middle schools and our high school kind of being the first schools to be involved in the referendum construction projects, and we've been busy. We really focused our time on those four buildings, but in particular, the middle schools, due to the timeline of completing the construction projects, that's really been the lion's share of our meetings and time. So tonight's presentation, we're really going to focus on the two middle schools, okay? I want to emphasize, this has really been a group effort, there's been a lot of involvement of a number of individuals, from the teachers and administrators at both Prairie and Station, as well as our teaching and learning department, John Breech and Kelly Hanson were involved, our instructional coaches, there's just been so much involvement. So while Josh and I are presenting tonight, I really want to emphasize, this, what you're going to see tonight is the result of a lot of work of the people that are going to be living and working in these spaces, and really meeting the needs and the instruction at those sites. So, to begin, Josh is going to kind of show some of the floor plans and the high-level work that we've been doing, and then I'll kind of help lead us through the 3D design, so you can actually kind of like walk through the building. I will do my best to do this in a brief fashion, but I would encourage any of our board members, when we did this last week with our parents, we actually recorded those sessions, and the teachers actually led that discussion, so if you want more detail, they're about 45 minutes to an hour long, I would encourage you, they're both posted on our referendum website at the bottom of the page, you can go and watch those, okay? So with that, I'll turn it over to Josh.
Okay, well, thank you very much, again, thank you for the opportunity, we love working with the district, this is a, really a great project for the kids, and we just really want to do the best job to really give back to the community, so this is a great project. These two are, again, our first two, and so we, we had a chance to really go deep with the teachers and get a lot of information, and really design from the inside out, that's how we do it. But the idea here is to provide a space that's flexible, adaptable for the future, and we know that styles will change, people will change, but the space is going to be usable for years and years to come. So the first project is Prairie Middle School, and this is just a kind of a bird-eye view, if you will, of the building itself, it's kind of hard to see on the screen because it's a bit light there, but the school itself is the darker shade building, and then the lighter one on the left is the early center, the early learning center. So we're focusing on the northern part of the building, where you see that yellow dot there. And then the pink square that's kind of on the upper right is the currently, currently the location of the mobile classrooms, and so those classrooms will be removed, part of this project, and then that yellow kind of circle there is going to be really focused on, you know, where the addition is going to be located. We looked at different options for the location of it, and this is really a point that is going to help a lot of different factors in the building, one of them being the work, the traffic flow through the space. I'm going to go into the floor plan of that little addition there. So you can see in white, kind of on the left and the top of the plan, those are existing classrooms that we are maintaining on the two floors, the north side of the building, which is that northern wing, if you will. And so in orange, you can see kind of the new connector that we're creating, so we were early on looking at potentially leaving a courtyard that was exposed outside, but by making the plan more efficient, a little bit tighter and closer, we were able to actually cover that up and make that courtyard a four-season space that everyone can use, and so you can see all the collaboration zones across the plan there, so again, we're giving the new classrooms in blue, the shaded blue there, you know, access to those collaboration zones, but also the existing classrooms on the left, also to the north, will also have access to those spaces. So again, we were able to afford to put some doors, so some existing science labs have the opportunity to open up to these spaces as well. It's also giving us a lot of flexibility to open up some of these classrooms and spread the kids apart more if we need to, or close the walls down, so there's a lot of flex around those spaces. I will, the next slide is our quick walkthrough, so I will start that, but I will pause.
Yep, all right.
As we get here.
Can you, actually, can you go back to the floor plan for just one second? Just to kind of orient you, so what you just saw as we entered the space, that's the lower left-hand corner of where you're entering, and then we're going to head north down that new corridor and kind of make the loop around, just so you can kind of visualize it as we're walking through.
I found my pointer.
There you go.
So this is the access point.
When I first looked at it, I'm like, where am I on Prairie? Got to give you a specific of where we're starting at.
And maybe another quick comment, the existing hallway is currently on the left side of this plan where my pointer is, so this is the existing hallway, and it goes and it turns to the north and over, and then there's an existing staircase there in the corner that we are going to use to reconnect with the new addition, so that we don't have to sacrifice existing classrooms that are located right there. So we were able to maintain those classrooms and just go around them instead, and reuse an existing staircase that's useful for our own use as well. And so we go around, and we can reconnect at the bottom of the plan here without, again, killing classrooms, but we're also providing doors to the outside, so again, the signs, for example, these two signs, classrooms can have access to this and even go outside, so it's an easy, it's going to be right nearby. The little walkthrough will start at the bottom of this plan, right where my dot is, and then we're just going to quickly go through.
Yeah, so the video's about two minutes, and I'll try to narrate as we go along, now that you know where you're starting at. So as we first come in to the new addition, you'll be able to see, along the left-hand side, this is the current, if you just stop right here, Josh? This is the current exterior of the building. Hold on.
Pause.
We'll get there.
I apologize.
Yeah, you can probably see it again here in this view. There you go. So we're that orangish-red brick, that's the outside of Prairie now, what we're trying to do is actually take advantage of what was windows, and creating some doorway spaces, just replacing the window in the units to create so that you can get from the existing rooms into the collaboration space, as well as on the other side of the hallway of that collaboration space, seeing new opportunities where there's access to that for students and staff that can spread out, but on the new addition, you're actually able to do it with either folding partition walls or garage doors. But one of the big things that the teachers really were looking for was not just having the new space have those elements, and a solution was to be able to kind of take advantage of creating some doorways from the existing classrooms, so really, a double benefit of being very efficient, of actually using that concept in the existing building as well as the new addition. So as we kind of walk through that new space, you see lots of opportunities where students can flow outside of classrooms on either side of that collaboration space, and continue learning in that space. On the left there, there was a small breakout room where teachers can use that for small meetings with students. If we have special ed or ELL students that need to pull a small group of students out of a classroom and work with them individually, they can do that. Here's another, if you stop right there, here's another small breakout space, this is at the very north end of that Prairie design. And now we're going to enter into the new addition. So as the video continues, you can first see there's a new garage door system that would open up, and so if we want to extend learning outside of that traditional classroom space, we can do so. I want to point out that the furniture and things you see, and the people standing in this, you know, in these images, it's really to help give you scale. We haven't selected the actual furniture or finishes yet, but this gives you a representation of what that may look like. Here you can actually see, these are two classrooms in the new addition, and now inside the room, one of the walls that's separating those two spaces can actually fold and collapse to open it up, so if we want to do some co-teaching within those new learning spaces, not only can you spread kids out into the hallway in the collaborative learning zones, but you can actually have that flexibility between the classrooms.
Sorry, guys. So I'd like to add to this, that this software is more of a massing software, so this is our first, kind of our first pass at schematic design. We are working to develop the finishes, the finish palette, the furniture, the lighting, some of those components will be added next time you see this, so we are keep, we keep progressing until about Labor Day, where we'll have another update on this. So you'll see artwork, carpet, or, you know, flooring, just to give you some examples, the furniture will be more defined, and so again, some of these walls appear pretty white right now, but it's because it's just our software that's just muddling this away, but we will be adding more layers to this, so we're getting back to, we're getting back to where we were, but it's overall, again, more of a massing technique. We also left the names on the floors to, we had some of our teachers speak to some of these moments in the space to kind of talk about how they would use the space themselves, and that was really good feedback. We're almost done here, and then we'll switch to Station. I apologize for that.
That's okay. You're going to drive by twice here, we'll go through it, and then we'll switch to Station here in just a minute. I want to just see the end of the video and see if I missed anything that we may want to comment on to help the board understand the new spaces. Something I didn't point out last time, you can see in the back of this classroom, we have equipped some of the new classrooms with the capability to be science classrooms. Again, not only are these learning spaces flexible to that common learning area, but we also want them to be flexible in design, so we can have different types of classrooms move into those spaces. So one, you know, period, it may be an English classroom, but if a science teacher needs that, like co-teaching scenario, where you can open up the walls in between, they're able to do so because they would be equipped to serve a multitude of curriculum needs. And then just at the end of the video here, you can see, here's another example of a partition that opens up between the small learning space and the large classroom space. One of the things we talked about was that we do have some applications in our middle schools now, of these foldable or walls that move and give flexibility. I want to point out that the designs and the materials we're using now do provide better soundproofing than what we currently have, they are designed with that in mind. In addition, we currently have walls that fold, but the space above the ceiling is open, which creates more of that sound transfer between the classrooms. In the new additions that you're seeing here, that would be a full wall going up to minimize, so to try to address some of the concerns that we have now in our examples where we have some flexible spaces that may be able to have walls that adjust. In addition, I want to point out, we took teachers from both Prairie and Station up to Jordan Middle School, which had some of the same elements and examples, and we carefully listened. Being here for 13 years as principal, I know how many conversations I had about, sometimes it's loud between our current walls that fold, and so we were really listening and watching for that all day long, and the new materials are much better and afford a much better And the new materials are much better and, and afford a much better ability to not have that sound transfer between the classrooms. Okay? Why don't we go to station next?
All right. So station. So the, again, this, this yellow dot is showing where the location of our new southwest corner of the, of the site. It is also where the mobile classrooms are currently located. So it's the same location in this case. So it's a bit more challenging because we, we are, we have to take the, the mobile classrooms down right away to be able to build the new addition. So we are working with Craig on the logistics, with Pepper as well on that. But it is the same location. Floor plan, again, a very similar approach than, than Prairie. So again, both projects are very similar in terms of what we're giving back and the, the number of collaboration zones and the openness and the flexibility. So same concept. In this case, it's a little reversed because we have the, the A wing to the north that's facing north, and then the, the B wing to the south here on the, on the right side. So again, we're providing that covered courtyard, if you will, which is meant to be a multi-purpose space that's going to have skylights, just like Prairie, but we're providing doorways so that existing classrooms on the right side, like the B wing, for example, have access to those spaces. So again, the teachers, that was, great feedback we got from their teachers on that, where more, more people can use the space, but also increase some of the circulation loop with some of our connections. So there's less dead ends and that helps with traffic flow and having the kids move around and spread out in that space.
So for this video, we're actually now starting up at the northeast corner, like the junction of the A and B wing, where many of our students currently leave station right now to head out to the mobile. We're starting up in that corner and then we'll follow the path down along that new corridor and then head to the left and kind of loop back up, just so you can kind of see where you're going in the video.
So where my pointer is, is currently an outdoor exit. And so we're reusing that doorway to get down to this new wing, if you will. So again, early on, the plan was showing just a freestanding building with a void space here that was meant to be left outside. But we were able to, again, make the plan more efficient and closer so that we can actually cover that up and it's now a four-season type space. So the tour is going to start in this corner. We're going to proceed down toward the south and then turn around, see some of these spaces and work our way back up. You can also see the connector here at the end of the hallway that, again, provide this circulation loop, if you will, for this addition.
Let's go ahead.
So this is a one-story addition.
Correct.
Is Prairie one a two-story addition or is it also a one-story?
One story.
Oh, it's also one story. There's a two-story, okay. Okay.
So as you enter the new space now, same concept, we're really taking advantage of that design element. The staff at both buildings really wanted to have the ability to have existing rooms and the new rooms both open up into this collaborative space. One of the things you'll notice here is that there are a number of skylights along here. One of the things we talked about was that while we're adding on a new addition, we didn't want the spaces to be dark. We wanted them to be bright and conducive to learning, especially if you're spilling out, but now you've created this kind of interior courtyard. So you'll see some of those elements. Here we're going into a classroom with a type of garage door system that opens up. And then you'll see inside the room, here's another element where not only does it open up to the collaborative space, but then there's opportunities for it to open up between the classrooms.
That's all writable surfaces. You can see also here on the left, the wood door, that's again, that's a new door into the existing classrooms on the B side, the B wing. We're also providing a lot of smaller, some smaller breakout spaces for smaller groups. Also the teachers can use that for their own meetings. Again, multi-purpose zones, but against multiple areas for collaboration.
A peek here to the left, this was one of the things that we really talked about was trying to create some looping within the building to improve circulation and traffic flow. A number of years ago, when we did some of the initial additions and renovations to Station campus, we were able to actually, right here, this used to be a gridlock corner because all students trying to access the D wing for exploratory, you would have an entire grade level come out. So all eighth grades trying to come out while all sixth grades coming down. A number of years ago when we did the renovation, we added a connecting link at the end and it drastically improved circulation. Same concept here in the visual where we're connecting this new addition to the end of the B wing so that kids have choice as to where they're going next and they can flow better without having some of those bottlenecks of the one-way hallways.
This is also where the, some restrooms will be installed and some of the utility rooms for, for the building. These brick walls also are the existing brick walls. They're a little bit lighter than this. Again, this is the software, we're going to refine this, but these are the existing brick walls that are today, they are outside the building. So we're going to bring those inside and, and work with them in our design. So it's a bit more of an urban, kind of an urban park kind of theme and with, you know, some great finishes, but we can reuse those brick walls on the inside.
All right. And I think we'll let the video now kind of play. We're heading into the new additions and you'll start to go through some of the new classrooms in the new wing. Again, you'll see smaller breakout rooms. And in the station examples, you'll see that you've got classroom space that actually opens up into the smaller zones where that panel of glass walls there, while it can be closed, if that's appropriate, it can also open up and afford that room to spread out. And there can be concollaboration between the two classrooms. As Josh mentioned, these dividers here are surfaces that can be writable because they can serve double duty as a divider, but also a writing surface for instruction and learning. And that pattern kind of continues as we navigate through the new addition and the new spaces in that new corridor. I realize we're both talking really fast, but we didn't want to, you know, provide the whole thing. If you really want to hear from the teachers and more explanation along the way, I would encourage you to go ahead and check out our videos that are on the referendum website. And now we're back to the start of the A wing.
So you can see a little bit of the A wing also that's connecting. We have about four classrooms that are connecting back into this as well. So it's, we're trying to maximize the connections to the existing.
That's a little insight into what we've been working on. Again, I can't emphasize how exciting it's been. The enthusiasm, the energy and the input of our staff has been phenomenal. They are so excited. They've been great partners with us to help us inform. And really what you see today, it's been an iterative process. We started with some different versions along the way, and this is the result of several months of working together. Josh put up here the project timeline. We are on track with our projects. As you can see, here's the four schools that we have started with and we've been busy this summer. As you can see, the red line, that's right there. We're right on track. We still have a few more months of design for the two middle schools. So while we gave you a snapshot tonight of kind of where we're at in the process, our work continues. Next, we will be refining those designs, looking at finishes and so forth over the next couple of months, and then on track to go out to bid sometime between Thanksgiving and winter break. Another update is that the high school, we've done quite a bit of site work. And that's going to be, now that the middle schools are at a pretty good point as far as where should the walls be, and how we're going to work within there, but we know kind of the, the layout, we're now going to be doing a similar process with the high school. And I anticipate our next presentation will be similar to this where after working with staff and parents and opportunities for the board to, to, you know, look at those different spaces at the high school, we'll be able, probably in a month or two, to be able to give a presentation on the high school similar to what we shared tonight. Any questions that you may have for any one of our team?
Does each project have a targeted budget? Like, you know, you have some money to spend on Prairie?
The first column next to the projects there, and I can resend the project timeline. There, there is a budget amount attached to it.
Okay.
Those are the numbers that are on the referendum website. So if you go for each school, that's the exact number we have here on that.
So I guess I'd like to ask the board, I know a number of us were able to participate in the sessions last week, the one for station and the one for Prairie. Did those meet your expectations? Is there something we could do to tweak those to make them more informative?
I was at both of them and I have never seen teachers so excited. They wanted to jump up and down. They were so excited about this. They were talking about how they're going to use these rooms, how they're going to share them, how the whole history of eighth grade classes could be in one room and have a something and science and math could get together. And it was amazing. Like, as unhappy as some of these meetings are, this was the happiest Zoom meeting I've ever been on, watching this meeting last week. And, and you had the technology zipping along with the teachers, like going through, and I was just amazed. So I thought it was great. The community members didn't ask as many questions as I thought. The one question that I think is really interesting for everybody is who gets to use those rooms? Like, you know, because all the teachers want those rooms, but you know? And so the teachers that had visited the Minnesota school and the ones that were involved, even like, you know, the gym teacher was like, I'd kind of like to really use those rooms, you know? How can we do it? But they were very sharing and it was, it surprised me that it's like a new concept that you, and you may explain this better than me, but that you move around and you're not assigned to one classroom and that's my math room for the year. It's, well, you know, some days I swap because math is in that big room and some days people are in my, this other room that was my room and my stuff is in a cabinet with wheels. So there was an awful lot of new ways to do things and it was really positive. And this, it was more than I could have ever imagined personally with this.
Kind of add to what Leah's talking about. You know, our middle schools are very much uniquely positioned to take advantage of this because of the fact that we are built around a team and, and have daily meetings as a team. And they have lots of conversations about teaching and learning all week long in different ways. It very naturally could fit to then, part of those conversations will be about who's using the space to meet their instructional needs. There may be a reason why a particular teacher needs to go into one of those rooms because the lesson itself lends to needing more space or the ability to co-teach with the person next door. And they're very open to kind of thinking differently about, it's not just my room anymore. It's actually, how do we all use this for the different learning objectives? So it's pretty exciting, but we are, because of that team meeting time, really able to do that very easily without it being another constraint or a thing that's a burden. It's actually just part of the process at middle school.
I, I'm real, I'm glad that you got a lot out of it. That was great. I shared your appreciation for the enthusiasm of the teachers. They were really excited and I think that their feedback was really incorporated into what was brought to us as well. So is there anything else that, I'm trying to just meet the board's expectations at this point, right? So that was our first try at bringing, you know, providing a more make the sausage, if you will, situation for the board. So it didn't all happen here all the time. Should we continue on in the same manner? Did, was it fine? I know Angela, you, you were at station, I believe.
I was, yeah. I mean, I, I think, I thought that was in lieu of a board presentation. So, you know, I mean, I, I think that, you know, it was here tonight was great, but, you know, I think maybe if people are really interested, they go to the meetings. If they're not, then maybe they...
Well, that was the idea. That was the idea and that, so we didn't have the 45. Is this more than you thought we should have here?
Yeah. I do. I mean, I, I think that, you know, if we're trying to be respectful of people's times, if people are, are very interested, I would encourage board members to reach out and attend these kind of breakout sessions. You know, I'll, I'll agree with Leah. It was, it was probably the best Zoom meeting I've been in, you know, in the past six months and it was awesome. And I asked a ton of questions and it was great. You know, I, I do get concerned because, you know, we're, we, you know, we had this, you know, conversations, obviously very emotional about, you know, when are we going to return to school, things like that. I understand that, you know, we have a schedule. I just, again, I, I worry, and I expressed this in our meeting as well, that I don't know if education is going to look like we are anticipating it will look like. And when we talk about words like collaboration and, you know, and, and then, but today we're talking about, well, we can't have people in this room because we need solid walls and, you know, it, it, there's a part of me that wants to pump the brakes. I'll be honest. I, I think, wow, this is a lot of work and a lot of excitement and we've already done a lot of work and a lot of excitement on one reopening plan and then had to pull back and it really is upsetting. And, you know, I just, there's a part of me that has some pretty major apprehension. This is no, you know, I'm not trying to throw water on the party because it is a beautiful design and I think that you couldn't have utilized the space better. And it was awesome to see the staff so excited. But, you know, that's me personally, that's my, that's my apprehension.
So I'm just trying to think in terms of the amount of information bringing, being brought to the board. Maybe people can give me feedback offline, how we can do this better, because I don't want to spend more time here than we need to, but it's a delicate balance. You know, I want to make sure that we're, we're finding the happy, happy medium for where everyone would like to see.
Yeah. What I don't want to do is get too far down the road and the board says, whoa, we didn't see this or we didn't know this.
Right.
So I were just trying to gauge this on this first round to see where, you're right, and that was the expectation. A lot of board members did participate.
Meetings are recorded too, right?
What's that?
The meetings are recorded. So I think it's up to the board members. If they want to participate in discussion, it's either in person or it's a future recording.
So, but the question is then, what do we want to see here as a board in order to, to be educated about making our decisions as we keep going? So the group doesn't get so far down and then the board say, well, wait a minute, you know, you didn't check in with us. I just want to make sure that we're managing the board's expectations.
So if it's just a touch base on the timeline, you know, with, and do a lot of this other discussion and side conversation, that's great. That's how we're pursuing.
And memos? I mean, we could, we can, we could have had the floor plan in a, in an attachment if no one wanted to look at it. I do think though that there's some value in at least showing it on the screen because I do think that if there are community members here that come here to learn more, this is the place where they should. So maybe we don't need to do the whole tour.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Well, we will try to tighten that up.
Yeah.
I liked this. And the pictures that you showed, that you sent with the board minutes, I couldn't picture exactly where it was happening. So having this in that perspective is helpful and with, you know, some of these meetings scheduled during the day, some of us do work and can't quite make them. So I, I like having this presentation.
Well, now that we know that they're posted, perhaps someone could prompt, yeah. So board members can go watch the videos.
For the next item.
Okay. Okay. The other thing that I promised that we would revisit is the idea now, the idea of having to come to the board with permission to go out to bid. I think your microphone's off.
There you go. Now it's on.
I don't know how that happened. Maybe I touched it. I'm sorry. The idea of, what I wanted to revisit is the idea of coming to the board for permission to go out to bid. And one of the concerns was that we might just be racking up architecture, architect fees, things like that. But now that we have a greater understanding of the cap in the contract and with the understanding that we will approve the final bids anyway, is there more comfort around that? Because what, and maybe some of our, our Pepper or DLR can share with us, it makes it challenging for them if they have to, if, if we're going to be doing that. It just, it creates kind of a gridlock in our timeline. I, I don't want to speak for anyone. If someone liked to address that.
I think the request is, I mean, and certainly jump in and maybe I'm, I won't mistake this. You know, when we do summer projects, we come, we bring the projects forward and the board reviews them and then considers them, right? Because every summer they're different. These projects have been identified. You know what they all are. It's just a matter of then giving the update where we're at. And then what we would suggest, what I would suggest from a staff perspective, is we will tell you, hey, we're going to go out to bid on these and we'll be bringing these back. Then the committee will be reviewing them and then bringing them forward.
And the board will vote on, I mean, nothing, no bids.
As long as they're within budget.
No bids are approved without the board anyway. The board has to do that.
Does that make sense? Maybe that, I tried to summarize it here. Is that accurate? Yes.
It's similar to how you handle the...
Ejector pump.
Right. We analyze the bid and is everybody comfortable with the project?
We told everybody we were going to do it. Hey, this is coming. It's part of the projects. We're going to... Hey, this is coming, it's part of the projects, we're going to do it, we're going to design it, we're going to go out to bid. What we're telling you here, we're going to take those next steps sometime after the first of the year, I think, we'll be bringing these bid packages back for the middle school. Yeah. Yeah, you'll know.
This process is just a much longer process than your summer projects. Your summer projects are more of a condensed project, where probably a lot of it happens between November and January. We've been working on this for the last few months, and we're going to, we're going to continue to work on the middle schools. Like I said, we'll be going probably...
Is everybody comfortable with that, or concerns, or want to do something different? I'm just, we need to know so we can direct staff and, and DLR and Pepper.
I'm fine after seeing both agreements.
I'm sorry?
I'm fine after seeing both agreements.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Which it is.
Thumbs up, okay. Okay. And then, the other thing I wanted to promise the board, in a future date, we will be bringing back the little analysis of additional elementary space where it should go, or some choices for the board where it might go, including the budget, as well as the STEM and special services spaces. If you remember, it was, you know, do we build eight additions, do we do four, you know, and how might that impact the individual schools? And that was going to have to be a total elementary conversation, and so that is to be determined, but it will be coming to the board at some time soon. Any other questions for our experts? Thank you very much, that's very nice. And I think the people that participated in the individual sessions really learned a lot. Thanks.
We're not going anywhere.
Craig's staying here, he's got the next agenda.
Hey, yes, first reading of board policy.
I guess you guys want to stick around for board policy discussion.
Thank you. Dive right in, Craig.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Nope. Thank you. So we have four board policies to review tonight. These are the remaining policies from issue 104. We'll start with policy seven colon 190. This policy is on student behavior. If you recall, last spring, there was quite a bit of conversation statewide on the use of timeout rooms, and there was some investigative journalism going on and so forth. They've added a paragraph five to our policy that talks about the use of those spaces and the appropriate use of those spaces, and particularly not using them as a form of punishment or discipline. And so you'll see that paragraph on page five of the, of the policy. We did include it after reviewing it as a policy committee under those circumstances. So that's the addition to this policy. Angela, anything to add?
It's pretty straightforward. Any questions? Can we move on to a second reading?
The next policy is policy seven colon three forty, student records. This one's even more straightforward. This is just continuous improvement of language and suggestions from the attorneys at press. The only thing our committee did was we added the term guardian, so it's parent or guardian, you'll see that referenced in the blue highlight, which represents the work of our committee.
Can we move this on to a second reading as well?
Okay. The next policy is a brand-new policy. This is policy seven colon three forty-five. This is on the use of educational technologies, student data and privacy and security. As I mentioned, this is a new policy, so we did have some decisions to make in addition to reviewing the policy. The first question was, did we want to have a privacy officer? And our committee, after discussion, decided, yes, that was a good idea. You'll see that reflected. We've had Matt's title as the person that will be in charge as a privacy officer to review and make sure that our Student Online Personal Protection Act, SOPA, that we are following those regulations. Really, this policy is about the use of educational technologies by staff, that they do meet that criteria, that's defined in the policy, and it protects our online student data. So any questions on this policy?
Barry, this is the one you had contacted me about, where we are updating based on SOPA.
We've already had, district already very much engaged in that work with the vendors that we use.
Move this on to a second reading. Hearing no challenges, feel free.
Okay. And then the last policy, seven colon forty, non-public school student, including parochial and homeschool students. No changes, this is as we periodically, when policies have not been reviewed for five years or longer, take a look at, and just make sure it's still current. We did review it as a committee, and it does still stand and represent the policies of our district without any changes suggested by our committee.
Okay. Any questions? Okay.
All right, thank you. We will be back next time. August fourteenth is the deadline for Title Nine. There's a whole set of new regulations. Our committee on August twenty-fifth will be working on those. We will be busy the next time we come back with those policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, agenda items for our September first meeting. We have a budget hearing, we will have more policies, first reading, and we will have a follow-up discussion about the 2021 school year. In addition, are there any other, any other agenda items that you know of right now?
We will have the fee discussion, based on the finance committee conversation as well. We'll just put it on for discussion.
Can I just ask a real quick question, Penny? I, I can't hear a thing you and Barry are saying. I don't know if it's the acoustics in here or where I'm sitting, but is there any discussion about using a different room now that the reopening plan has been established?
Well, my next question was going, I'm sorry you can't hear me, I'm trying to do the microphone. My next question was going to be, do we want to continue meeting in person? The, I mean, we do have, under the governor's order, the option to meet virtually. I, I just want to put that out there. The challenge, when I asked Brian about us meeting in person, this was the best room in order to accommodate the camera, to be able to see all of us. If we were to be in the boardroom, the camera probably couldn't get all of us. We would be in a horseshoe. So we might be able to work on the acoustics a little bit more. We tried from the last meeting, it's significantly better than it was at the last meeting.
It is hard, though. I agree with you, I'm struggling to hear sometimes, that's why.
And it's muffled because we have the masks on, too.
Yeah, it's a combination.
I mean, I, I think that there's so much value in us being together. However, I understand, you know, the challenges around the space and everything else, so what does everybody think?
We could go to the high school cafeteria, we've been there before. We may have similar challenges in there.
This, this is actually a smaller room with better acoustics than that, I would think.
Yeah.
You think?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to think about where we've been in the past, right? The ELC, we have been there before.
Where we've been in the past was a function of expecting larger crowds, correct?
Well, in the high school lunchroom, yes. The ELC, no.
Here? I just, I, I, again, I'm having a very difficult time hearing both Barry and yourself, Penny, so with two more board members on the end, I think it's going to be very challenging. I just don't know if it's where the microphones are, but that's just my take on it.
Yeah, and I agree. At the last board reading last week, I was on the end there, I couldn't hear a thing. So I agree with you, we have to keep looking on that.
It's the speakers, they're not faced toward us, they're faced out that way, so I don't know. I know that's the case. I'm just looking tonight, they're faced that way, they're not faced toward us, we can't hear.
Well, can the audience hear everybody, or is it harder to hear some people? You can hear everybody?
We can't hear each other.
So you can hear all of us, okay.
We can't hear each other, that's the problem.
So, so could there be something else done to help us hear better? Turn the speakers toward us a little bit more, or toward the center? I'm, I don't know.
Matt, any thoughts?
No, just to tell you, I could not hear, you were asking if I could hear, I couldn't hear anything from the speaker.
Penny, I didn't hear you ask me that question.
We made a couple of adjustments to our, our system today. One of them is, all of your microphones have speakers built into them, obviously that they're not working well, they're not, they're not loud enough. If we turn them up too, too loud, they start to feed back on us. We do have additional side speakers, we could maybe try to put multiple speakers, some of them facing the board. We can test that out next time.
There's nothing coming out of those speakers.
Well, there barely is. I could hear a little something, but very, barely.
Can you hear anything out of these? I hear nothing.
Do you hear me?
No. Not out of the speaker, I hear you out there.
Yeah.
Can you, we could set up larger speakers on the sides and face some of them toward the board, we can try that.
So, so do we want to try it again on September first?
I think it's important to be in person.
Okay.
I agree, in person is my number one priority. I think we need to be together for this.
We'll give it another shot with hopefully some improved acoustics, or not necessarily acoustics, but speakers, angles, whatever.
You want to do it here at Station again? I'm just asking.
I'm not, yes, I guess. I'm not sure what our alternatives are. When you and I have talked before, this seemed to be the best place in order to get us all on camera. I mean, if we met in the boardroom, that just wouldn't happen.
We could get in there, but we couldn't be on camera at the same time.
Right. I mean, and I think in, is, I guess I need to ask, is that still important to the board that we stream our meetings?
What about the high school auditorium?
I'm not sure that the system interfaces with that, with that system in there.
Just throwing things out, you guys know better than me.
We, we also have, can I jump in? We also have the option of using multiple cameras if we wanted to go back to the boardroom and try that.
Do that. Use multiple cameras and, you know.
I don't care where we are, as long as I can hear people. I literally, it's irrelevant, as long as we can hear everybody.
Okay, so why don't?
Figure it out.
Let Matt figure it out.
Yes, and then just watch your meeting notice for where we will be meeting.
I'll let you know.
You have a little bit of time. Okay. Is there a motion to approve confidentiality of closed session minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Penny Casimir?
Yes.
Gavin Newman?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you.